I'd like to bring this meeting of the school committee to order and ask all of you to join with me in a pledge of allegiance.
See him? He's in your enroll log?
(inaudible)
The town clerk is here to sign in, to swear in the new elected members, so we have to go out there and get sworn in. And then afterwards, we need a picture for the whole committee.
James Sorensen, Lee True Shelley, each of you has been elected to a three-year term through 2022 as a member of the Plymouth School Committee. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Plymouth School Committee in accordance with the bylaws and charter of the Town of Plymouth and the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts?
I do. Thank you very much.
You bet. Congratulations.
(inaudible)
Well, you're all extremely busy, so I don't know if there's ever a good time to take a picture.
(inaudible)
Rich, do a good job so we can use it, please. Okay.
Emily's not here.
Look at that, in order. You were in order, like, yeah.
This being the annual reorganization meeting of the school committee, once a year, the superintendent gets to be in charge. So he's going to have the gavel for about 30 seconds, I hope. So I'm going to bring it over to him.
After a town election, we have a swearing-in of new members, and in this case, it's a swearing-in of members who were successful in this weekend's election, and they were incumbents. So congratulations.
Thank you.
With that said, after the election, we have the reorganization of the school committee officers. And at this time, I'd like to open up the floor for nominations for chairman of the Plymouth School Committee. Ms. Burgess?
Yes, I'd like to nominate James Sorensen for chairperson.
For the record, we have one nomination by Mrs. Burgess for Dr. James Sorensen for chairman of the Plymouth School Committee. Any other nominations tonight? I close nominations. I'd like, I'd like members of the Plymouth School Committee to lodge their vote for chairman of the Plymouth School Committee. Dr. James Sorensen, please raise your hand in favor.
I'll raise my hand.
That is unanimous. At this point, I turn the gavel back to the chairman of the Plymouth School Committee for 2020, 1920.
2022, that's crazy. 2022.
I've been on 22 years.
Before I open up the floor for nominations for the other members of the executive board, I want to thank the committee for your support, and I want to tell the committee that I will do everything in my power to live up to the trust that you put in me to represent this board and this educational community to Plymouth at large. Having said that, it is now time to open up the floor for nominations for the position of vice chairman of the school committee. Ms. Badger?
I'd like to nominate Ms. Hunt for vice chair.
We have a nomination for Ms. Hunt for vice chair. Is there any other names to place in nomination? Seeing no hands, I will close nominations, and at this point, I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor of Ms. Hunt as the vice chair of the school committee, please raise your hand. That is also unanimous. Thank you very much. And now I would like to open up nominations for the position of secretary of the school committee. Ms. Hunt?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Morgan.
We have a nomination for Mr. Morgan for vice, for secretary of the school committee. Are there any other names to place in nomination? Seeing no other hands, I'll declare nominations closed, and at this point, ask the committee to vote. All those in favor of Mr. Morgan as secretary of the school committee? And that is also unanimous. Thank you very much, everybody. We will be, within the next week or so, we will be assigning, I will be assigning everybody to their subcommittees and their liaisons. Please, if you have any special, specific requests, please get them to me. If I don't get any specific requests from somebody, I will assume that what you've been serving on right now can continue into the next year. Any questions on that from committee members? Ms. Badger?
Will we, are we going to talk about adding the CPAC to that, or will that be another time?
That's not an agenda item, but that has to be added. I believe that we can add that subcommittee without, without having an agenda item, so I will add that to the list.
Okay, thank you.
Special Ed.
What, special education?
Oh, yeah. Okay.
CPAC representatives.
Did you make a note of that, to add it to the list?
CPAC representative of Plymouth School Committee.
Is there anybody attending tonight's meeting who isn't already on the agenda who would like to speak to the school committee? Okay, I'm seeing no hands, so I'm going to move on to the next agenda item. Tonight's sort of a special night for our representatives from North and South because they're all going to graduate pretty soon, very soon, in fact. So let's start with North.
Thank you. The AP exams began today and will continue through Friday. Oh, that's, that's two weeks ago, I'm sorry. AP exams are over.
Hey, are you new at this?
He's ready to be done.
Surprise.
Okay, MCAS, that's what's this week. Our math MCAS testing is taking place this coming Tuesday and Wednesday, May 21st and 22nd. Testing begins right away at the start of the school day, so it's important for students to be in school on time both days. As I'm sure you know, passing MCAS is a graduation requirement, but also very high scores qualify students for the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship for free tuition at Massachusetts in-state colleges and universities. There's a practice test that students can take to see what the test is like, prepare for the format, and hopefully get any, get any test anxiety away before Tuesday. Feel free to have your child take the practice test. As a reminder, we serve breakfast in the cafeteria every day, so feel free to send them in early to get a great start to the day. PNHS graduation will be held on June 1st at Plymouth North, and it has the Moorean Graduation this year at 9:30, and it will be on the football field. In the event of inclement weather, the event will take place in the gymnasium. Life Touch will be providing professional photography services at graduation. Feel free to register in order to be notified when event images and proofs are available for purchase at our Life Touch graduation website. And then upcoming events for seniors, last Wednesday was Senior Fest. On this Wednesday is Hypnotist Night. The last day of classes is Thursday. Class day will be this Friday. Graduation practice is May 28th. Dinner dance is May 28th. Another graduation practice is May 30th, and convocation is also May 30th. Please make sure to check your student Aspen account to get the most current academic standings. Senior final exams begin today and will continue through Friday, May 23rd. The Plymouth North High School Junior Prom was held Friday at the Indian Pond Country Club in Kingston. The event was a great success with over 350 guests. Congratulations to the 2019 prom king and queen voted on by their peers, Anna Tamulonis and Harry Jenkins. The prom corps also consisted of Hannah Setner, Julia Cheeseman, Abby Steinwick, Shay Tavakilian, Keenan Johnson, Caleb Kerr, Matt Manfredi, and David Roos. On May 18th, seniors at Plymouth North completed their year-long senior project by presenting their experiences to a panel of community members and Plymouth North faculty. Over 63 students completed the senior project program, which seeks to provide students with real-world experiences with mentors in the field that they may enter in in the future. On Sunday, May 19th, the athletic department at Plymouth North held its annual senior athletic awards night. 118 seniors were recognized for their involvement in sports while here at North. Also, 12 seniors were also given the Iron Eagle Award. This award is given to students who participated in a sport every season during their four-year career here at North. On May 14th, students from the CCTE Allied Health Program received their nursing assistant pins during a traditional ceremony. The pinning ceremony signifies the welcoming of new nursing assistants into the professional, professional field of nursing. Students were pinned by current CNA co-op students, alumni CNA students, or family members that are in the professional nursing fields. Students earn a certificate by completing the CNA training program. The training program includes 75 hours of nursing assistant theory, 22 hours of clinical work experience. Students complete their clinical hours at the Life Care Center of Plymouth, where they provide personal, personal care to patients with the supervision and guidance of their allied health instructors. Upon completion of the course, students are then tested by the American Red Cross on both clinical and written skills. To date, all students have tested, have achieved a passing score from the American Red Cross test. They are now licensed by the State of Massachusetts as certified nursing assistants. The following students were pinned: Riley Bassett, Maggie Driscoll, Amelia Christensen, Sam Porter, Rory Perry, Carolyn Mullen, Morgan Utara, Anna Mento, Alexandra Lewis, Megan Montelio, Janelle Long, Anna Tamulonis, Chloe Stutzman, and Abigail Petty. And that is all for the report.
Thank you. And now to South.
Last week, we recognized the top 10 seniors in the class of 2019 for their academic excellence. Administration shared a short bio on each senior and their accomplishments as their family members joined us for breakfast and culinary. This annual event is one of our finest of the year. Last night, 97 senior athletes were recognized for their commitment to PSHS athletics. Of those, 13 were recognized, awarded the Rock Award, which is recognizing each student for participating in 12 seasons. This was an amazing event in which every student athlete received recognition in a plaque created by our own technical studies department. We are in the final week for seniors. Final exams are taking place, and all grades will be finalized for graduation by the, by the end of Friday, May 24th. The Spring Instrumental Concert will take place this Wednesday at 7:00 PM in the Performing Arts Center. Senior Class Day will begin at 9:00 AM on Friday, as seniors will be recognized with a variety of awards. Afterwards, the seniors will receive their yearbooks. Graduation rehearsal will take place Tuesday and Friday next week at 11:00 AM. Senior attendance at rehearsal is mandatory. Senior Academic Awards and Scholarship Night will take place Wednesday, May 29th. A reception for our special guests and scholarship donors will take place in culinary. The ceremony will begin at 7:00 PM in the Performing Arts Center. The Panther Club House preschool graduation will take place on Thursday, May 30th at 9:00 AM in the Performing Arts Center. And the senior dinner dance will be on Thursday, May 30th at, okay, I'm not going to pronounce this right, but.
Pompan度.
Yeah, thank you so much. And, thank you. Ticket sales ended today. Math MCAS testing will take place for all sophomores tomorrow and Wednesday. This is the first year's junior computer-based testing for the math MCAS. Good luck to all. Seniors are reminded to check Aspen for any outstanding fees prior to May 30th. All obligations must be taken care of in order to participate in the graduation ceremony. Congratulations to our girls track and field team, along with our coaches, as they clinch the share of the Patriot League title for the first time in school history. More good news for graphic design and visual communication students. Our seniors Sean Sanjanuit and Natalie Rita were named seventh place in the country in a 10-day short film festival for their film, They Never Loved Me. They also won the award for best cinematic technique and finished the top three for best performance and best editing. This competition is nationwide, and over 270 films were submitted, and from nearly 80 schools. Congratulations to Sean and Natalie. It is with utmost pleasure that our very first Project Rising banquet, with a few of our community leaders, took place this week in Culinary Arts, thanks to the support of PS senior Jared Zelvin and PN senior Yaxi Velquez, guided by school committee member Venda Haywood. The goal of Project Rising is to empower students to exemplify qualities of leadership or are interested in political sciences. These students may have already demonstrated political prowess in our all-responsible, intellectual, and young adults. Our hope is that through conversation with political leaders and several other politicians and local representatives, these students will gain confidence in their ability to shape the world around them. And finally, graduation is June 1st. The ceremony begins at 1:30 in the stadium, weather permitting.
Okay. As I said at the end of our last meeting when you guys presented to us that we have appreciated all of you, all of the information you bring to the committee, a lot of things that you've told us at meetings we could not have known about, and it's very helpful for us to get that information, and as well as getting many of the things out on cable, as you have done very, very well. I see some new members here. Can you introduce us?
Oh, I've been here, but this is Alex, and she's a sophomore going to her junior year next year, and she'll be replacing Bella.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Hunt?
All right. So on behalf of the committee, and if anybody else wants to say anything too, I just wanted to wish Eddie and Ruby good luck next year in whatever you're choosing to do.
Thank you.
And, you know, I said this to Bella last time, you know, we've enjoyed having you here so much. You two are, you know, have a special place in my heart because I've known you guys for so long. And we wish you well. So impressed with you guys, how you can get up and talk on camera and present yourself, not just here, but we see you at all sorts of events doing the same thing. And, you know, you guys are great kids, and I know that you have amazing futures ahead of you. And as I told Bella, I don't think you guys were here, MASC is trying to do some kind of a convening, and for you folks as well, of student representatives to school committees. Not all school committees have them, and we really want, at least in our region, to start to get you guys together so we can talk about hot topics and things that concern you, and you can meet people that do things in other schools. And I'm really, really hoping Eddie and Ruby and Bella can come back and maybe participate in that, since it happened after you left, which really makes me sad. I tried to schedule one before you left, it just didn't work out. So thank you so much for all your contributions, and we hope that we see lots of good things from you in the future. I'm sure we will.
I want to say thank you to all of you guys, because this has been a really cool part of high school for me, definitely, and I feel like I've learned a lot, and especially last year, I feel like we did a lot with like the gun violence stuff, and that was really like influential to me. And I'm sorry, this year, I was kind of, I was very busy this year, so I did not get to attend as many meetings as I did last year. But I just want to let you guys all know that we both appreciate you, and like, we've learned a lot, so thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's been wonderful being able to be here every other week, and like, even like last year, when we had tough things to discuss, having the opportunity to, to discuss those things and to be here was very inspiring to me as a person, and, and, you know, it opened up a lot of, a lot of doors in my head with what my voice can do, what I can do in the future with these type of situations. So thank you for allowing us the platform to come and represent our school and represent the students in our school, and it's been an honor being here with you guys.
Okay, thank you. Nobody's ever called a school committee meeting "cool" before. Oh, come on. Thank you, thank you, thank you so much.
Yes, I was. That's so cool.
Okay. So, we also have another recognition program right now. Dr. Mae Estes?
Yes, tonight, we have four students from Plymouth South High School who are going to receive certificates of commendation this evening. And I will read the certificate, and then I'll come up and read their names. And I'm not sure if Ms. Reardon wants to join me for this. This is a commendation certificate, and it's in recognition of your significant accomplishments in attending the Region 5 Science and Engineering Fair, which is a significant feat. So I have four students that we want to call up for this commendation. And, you know, one thing that I'd like to say about the Science and Engineering Fair, this is a very, very significant accomplishment, not only for them to participate because of the amount of time above and beyond the regular school that it takes to get this done, but to actually go on to the region. So it's a great commendation. I'd like to thank Ms. Reardon for really putting together these opportunities for our students to challenge themselves in a different way. So with that said, I'm going to go up and read their names, and we will award these commendations tonight.
Please do, thank you.
So these are all from Plymouth South High School. We're going to start with Owen St. Avon.
Thanks.
Ms. Reardon?
Thanks.
Want to take a picture with us? Because the media's here, right? Thank you. Next, we have Julianne Morse. Julianne? Congratulations. And we'll take a picture with you, too.
So, for sure. That's right.
Last one. He didn't touch the other girl. And the last one is Alexandra Godfrey. She's here in double duty tonight. Congratulations. And one more picture.
Congratulations to everybody. Thank you, Ms. Reardon. Tonight, we will be receiving our annual update from our curriculum coordinators. Dr. Mae Estes?
Yes, this evening, we are honored to have our curriculum coordinators here tonight, and they will be representing the four academic areas, and I'd like to have the coordinators come up, and they can, one by one, introduce themselves, and I believe we will be starting with, who are we starting with tonight? Dr. White will be here tonight to begin our presentation. So Lisa White is our English Language Arts Coordinator. She will kick it off tonight, and we will move from there.
Good evening and welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's great.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. So I have some slides I'll show, but before I do, we've been working on a project with Chris Campbell and the coordinator's office to create videos that highlight our, each of our academic departments. And my video is literally fresh off the premiere, I guess, is tonight. So I want to thank, first of all, EDTV for all of their hard work in gathering the footage that you're going to see to accompany the interviews. They've done a lot of amazing work, and I'm going to start off by showing the video, and then I'll add on from there.
Literacy is an integral part of daily life. In the coming years, our students will need to be literate in ways we cannot yet imagine. It is therefore imperative that we teach our students how to think critically and solve problems, both collaboratively and independently.
I think one of the things that makes our ELA program special in Plymouth is the fact that we really believe in combining the skill aspect of literacy with the engagement aspect of literacy. It's not just about one or the other. So when you go into a classroom, you see a lot of students in a small group, in a conference with a teacher, you know, really doing the reading, doing the writing, and not just taking in information.
This approach to instruction balances the explicit teaching of skills and strategies through demonstration, with ample opportunities to apply these skills and strategies to authentic reading and writing experiences.
Students are challenged and supported because, first of all, we provide students with the opportunity to have choice in what they read and write, and so right from the get-go, what they are engaged in is relevant to them. And through that process, we provide time for small-group work and individual interaction with teachers. We try to prioritize conferencing with students over whole-class feedback because it's specific to students, and that engagement with teachers is what motivates students to, to kind of grow.
At the elementary level, we have implemented a balanced literacy approach to instruction through reading and writing workshops. This approach to instruction balances the teaching of skills and strategies to create authentic reading and writing experiences.
At the elementary level, we teach students to write in a variety of text types. Students learn how to write an essay. Students learn how to write an informational text. Students learn how to write stories, both realistic fiction and personal narratives.
Ongoing assessment allows us to identify students' strengths and monitor their progress over time. This allows us to differentiate instruction to best meet the diverse need of our students.
So regardless of their learning challenge, we're here to meet the needs of all students and to kind of meet them where they're at and then push them up. We have leveled texts. We have a variety of books that kids are reading, genres, and writing projects and assignments, from an essay to more of like a journal writing, and lots of opportunities to speak in class and kind of just run the gamut.
At the secondary level, students are able to determine themes and main ideas through reading increasingly complex literary texts. They are able to conduct research and present their findings by writing for various purposes and audiences. Students are also able to collaborate with their fellow classmates in order to share ideas and gain knowledge.
Students engage daily in discussion about what they're reading, what they're thinking, in what we call progressive discourse, which is when students engage together and talk about what they're thinking and reading, and then it makes them smarter because it helps them think more deeply.
I definitely find working in groups easier. You get to figure out your opinion, but you also get to hear others, and it helps you to figure out how you like to read, how you like to write, and I feel like all the collaboration helps us to like learn about ourselves and even like the books that we're reading.
Through the Word Within the Word program, middle school students learn the most common roots and affixes to better tackle unknown vocabulary.
Word Within a Word is a specific program that allows students to learn hundreds of roots. And then what we do as teachers is we help them think about, okay, that root is in this word, what might the word mean? And so instead of giving them just one vocab word that they know, we've given them a tool to learn all kinds of vocab words.
Students in all grades learn to engage in self-directed discussions about literature with their peers through book clubs and Socratic circles.
I really feel like student-led discussions gave everyone the opportunity to learn how to articulate their opinions in an educated way, and I think that's a great thing, no matter what your opinions are, because people get so caught up in just saying the first thing that comes to their mind. But, you know, learning to sit down with a group of people who might not necessarily agree with you, and speak to them in a way that's respectful, but also smart, and get your point across, I think that's a really helpful thing to learn how to do.
It is important to have student-led discussions at every level in our English classrooms because it puts the ownership on the students, and it makes them have to try to take all the reading that they've done, if they've watched a video, to try to put it all together and put it in their own words, and have a academic conversation where you have several students responding to one another and really trying to analyze the task at hand.
There is an emphasis on choice of texts and tasks to increase student motivation and engagement.
The LA Department has really dedicated a lot of time to getting books in students' hands, and there's a lot of choice, there's a lot of resources, and I think the district really welcomes diversity in books and in choices, and just kind of letting students find their own path with reading.
From literature circles to book clubs to Socratic discussions, there is an emphasis on choice for students. There is no better example of this than at the high school level, where seniors can choose from a number of different half-year courses, and all students can take a number of electives. Choices include dystopian literature, Shakespeare, creative writing, and journalism, among others.
So what we're finding with choices is that students are a lot more
So what we're finding with choices is that students are a lot more willing to read and write and work with the choices that they make. And we're finding that students are opening themselves up a lot more to the material and really embedding themselves in what they're learning each day.
Plymouth Public Schools has definitely offered me a huge variety of courses. I think that having all these tools has definitely built a really great English foundation for me to go on into college and even beyond that and have these amazing skills that I learned through half-year classes, full-year classes. There's just a really great variety within the English department, and I'm really thankful for that.
Students in all grades in Plymouth are being taught specific strategies to improve their public speaking skills.
The English curriculum is more than just reading and writing. It's actually speaking and listening as well. That's a component the students are graded on. So we use the acronym PVLEGS. We introduce that at the beginning of the year, carry it throughout the year to really help students become better speakers.
Students also have multiple enrichment opportunities through the ELA program. For example, both high schools offer students the opportunity to participate in the Poetry Out Loud competition, with winners sent to the regional and hopefully state competition. K-12 students are encouraged to submit their writing to have it published in our Reflections anthology, along with pieces from Plymouth, U.K. Student artists create pieces inspired by poems and short stories. A celebration is held each year to honor both authors and artists. Literacy learning is alive and well in the Plymouth Public Schools, creating readers, writers, speakers, and thinkers that are ready to take on the world.
Excellent.
So that's, I think, a very solid overview of everything that's going on in the LA Department across all grades. I just wanna add a few pieces to the presentation of more recent initiatives and projects that we've been working on.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm in charge of that. So one of the things I think you heard and saw quite a bit in the video is reference to the workshop model. And that's something that we've now been able to extend through high school. We've had students that have been working through a workshop model at the elementary grades for quite a while, and those students are now in middle and high school. And so we've been developing these habits for a long time. Three of the core tenets of the workshop model are choice, stamina, and independence. You heard a lot, I think, in the video about choice, and we know that that's one of the highest predictors of engagement for students, is providing some guided choice in what they read and what they write. Stamina is another one. We wanna build our students' abilities to have stamina in reading, stamina in writing, and then that leads to independence, because all of this, they have to be able to do this without the teachers eventually, and so we really wanna build that independence throughout the grade levels. Another piece that I've worked quite a bit on this year is inclusive practices. And in conjunction with the Special Ed Department and some of my literacy coaches, we've done some workshops on both UDL and social-emotional learning. One of the things that I think is really important is to think about social-emotional learning skills as they occur naturally in the classroom, in our academic setting. So they're not something that you do on the side. So the workshop model lends itself to helping students develop these skills, developing their ability to be independent, their ability to figure out what to do when things become difficult, their ability to work cooperatively and to talk with others. So these are all practices that are really embedded in what we do every day with our students. And so I think it's been really important to think about how those pieces really fit together. They're not some isolated piece. They're really integral to the work we do every day. And then with UDL, Universal Design for Learning, we've done some work around how to help our struggling writers. Are we making sure that we're providing them scaffolds and helping them to access our I love this quote by Maggie Anderson, "We don't have time not to teach social-emotional learning as part of everyday literacy instruction." It really, as I said, it's something that we should be doing every day. And we met with the school psychologist, and one of the things we talked about was that instead of having a lot of scenarios that students might be thinking through when they need to work on certain skills, they can work on these skills right in the context of their everyday instruction often. So if you're having a group discussion, you can work on, how do you build on the ideas of others? How do you disagree respectfully? So these are things, again, that I think that can happen really nicely in class context. One interesting new piece with our curriculum is, we had about 16 teachers pilot kindergarten and first-grade phonics units this year. These are new units that came out from Teachers College. They are integrated within the reading and writing units that we already use. The K-1 teachers that piloted these units loved them. They thought they were extremely engaging for our students, and they fit naturally into our existing programs. And so the recommendation is that we will use these units with all of our K-1 students next year, and we'll be doing a little bit of a small group pilot, if you will, with second grade for the following year. You might be hearing about Mabel and Rashid. Those are the elephant and lion mascots that go with the units, and they are very much a part of the classroom in K-1. So we'll be, I'll be sharing more about that, I'm sure, in the future. In middle school, we have new units of study that, again, follow along with the work we've been doing at the elementary grades. So we're really looking to have a nice cohesiveness to the program that we're using. You heard a little bit in the video about Poetry Out Loud. That's been a wonderful extension this year. We've done this in the past, but this year, we actually had every single student had to learn a poem in their English class and present it in front of the class. And then there were classroom winners, and then school winners, and then we had regional. And Oliver, as you can see his picture there, was actually a state representative, and he did quite well, so we're very proud of him. But the poetry has really, it's a wonderful opportunity for them to analyze and interpret poems and also to perform. There were many, many community-linked events. One Book, One School. You saw some wonderful whole-school makeovers of book-themed events this year at several of our elementary schools. Read Across America is always engaging for community readers. At the secondary level, we started a campaign called Currently Reading. And so every high school teacher had a sign outside their door, and they wrote down, they're still there, actually, they write down the book they're currently reading. And we're really trying to show our students that all teachers and all, you know, adults have types of books that they like to read and enjoy to read, not just their English teacher. PCIS had a wonderful family-community literacy night in the fall, where they had a variety of speakers and people from the community. And then we are embarking, of course, on our summer reading program. I'm finalizing the list for that right now. And we're working closely with the Plymouth Public Library to support their program as Reflections, you saw referenced in the video. That's one of our favorite projects. We're at the fourth edition. We actually are coming up to our fifth edition. This is something we also do with Plymouth, U.K. And we will actually be adding the Netherlands to our group. So we'll be putting some entries from the Netherlands in our next edition and vice versa. And finally, library-media program is also a program that I work with. And the program's always evolving. While reading is at the core and developing a love for reading, we also do a lot of work in the department on building research skills and analyzing sources. And we recently have done quite a bit of work with STEAM and having some robotics and really introducing some hands-on activities in our library classes. So I'll just end with one of my favorite quotes, something that we believe in, in the department. "There's no such thing as a child who hates to read. There are only children who have not found the right book." And these are some of our students, so I can show you that our students are finding the right books to read, even if they're walking down the hallway. And in front of the computer is one of my favorites, actually. So thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's in production, so it's gonna be like Game of Thrones. We're gonna give you a full year to just sit and perseverate on what it's gonna look like. And it won't be as disappointing as what I've heard the finale was. I don't watch it. So I'm Kelly Batinas. I'm here to present you with our math update. So the first thing I kind of wanna do is apologize to parents and people that wonder what we've done to math. I didn't personally do it, but I'm responsible for it, so I wanted to take some time to really explain what's going on. I'm not going to go through these, but I just wanted to put this out there. So these are the standards for mathematical practice. And very similar to what Lisa spoke about in English, gone are the days where we're just trying to teach facts, just like we're not trying to teach vocabulary words. And you teach them, you know, the root and where it came from, so they can put it together themselves. So those days of just, you carry the one because you carry the one, is gone. And again, I apologize. But these standards here are, go in tandem with the standards that we all know so well because we're, you know, it's MCAS-focused and we wanna know what students need to learn. This is a guide for the how. And to summarize these eight standards, it's really that problem-solving isn't a separate skill to learn anymore, that as students learn math, K-12, every component of mathematics, they're problem-solving at the same time, and they're figuring out why that works, why those two things add together, why those things multiply together to equal a certain number, how you approach a problem. So it's not a separate taught skill. And I really like this graphic displays it. So you have your common core standards, and then those break down to the standards for practice and the standards for content. So it's the how and the what. I think we focus a lot on the what because of data. So I just wanted to show the how, and the end result is to get that skill with understanding, not just memorization, but really to understand where their results are coming from. So now to go, I just wanna break it down by grade level, just to update you on our different levels. So in elementary, we're still with our everyday math. That's our foundation for our K-5 mathematics. This year, we've started with Math Workshop, very similar to Reading and Writing Workshop, which I'm sure you've heard about for some time now from Lisa. Plymouth has had a wonderful foundation for the workshop model, and we're going beyond because things are always changing. One thing I'm proud to say is when we really embarked on what we thought was a new journey, and we looked at schools that have implemented Math Workshop, went to many conferences on Math Workshop, you learn that where you think you're starting, we started much higher. We were in a really, really, really great place. Our teachers are doing wonderful things, and it was really just going beyond that and enhancing the time that we spend with our students. And next year, we'll be branching that out into Grade Four. We chose to start with our MCAS grades first, but teachers are very curious, so I already have some Grade Three teachers that have volunteered to be model teachers to allow other grades into their classrooms to see what's going on. Another thing I'm really, really excited about is next year, we're going to be doing our benchmark testing with Star Math Diagnostics. Star and MAP, you may have heard, are two of the really large companies that do the diagnostic testing. It's student-adaptive, so as students answer questions correctly, it gets harder. If they're having difficulties, the program levels itself out to find the foundational skills where students have needs. It's also MCAS predictive, which is really, really great. We've been doing it for a few years in Grade Six through Eight. Now we're expanding out, so we'll be One through Eight. And then we also do a small pilot in Grade Nine, which I'll talk about later. In middle school, we have reallocated a couple of our teachers who used to work with small populations of students. They still work with a small population of students that maybe have some gaps in their mathematical understanding, but now are also consulting teachers in math that work with our teachers. They're going into teachers' classrooms, they're working with them, they're helping them with strategies, grouping students, understanding the Star Math data, understanding MCAS data, and really just reaching a larger audience. Instead of a targeted population of students, they're working with the teacher to help them better address the needs of all students. So we have one of those teachers as of this year at each of our middle schools. We use Big Ideas Math. We were a little disjointed in the middle school. When I first got here, the three different grades had three different text series, which was kind of hard to have a continuum, especially how we do it here in Plymouth with the pre-algebra algebra in seventh and eighth grade. So this is our first year where all three of our grades have utilized the same program. And Big Ideas Math is a wonderful program. It's really tailored to the way middle school math is now, where it's, yeah, you have your sixth, seventh, and eighth grade standards, but you're preparing them for algebra. And it really blends the two very nicely. They have a special algebra text just for eighth grade, which is really, really nice to target how a middle school student thinks and understands mathematics. And again, we do our Star Math testing there. So where the teachers are used to having it start in sixth grade, as we go on, you know, students will be entering middle school where you tend to hit your bumps in the road with math, they'll now have years of data behind them now that we're starting that in first grade, which I'm really excited about. In high school, we also have updated texts, so now all of our texts reflect 2017 or later, which reflect the change in standards. So that's wonderful. Algebra I through pre-calculus, we use the Glencoe series, and those have all been updated now. Again, this is a bit of a year late in updating you, but in AP Calculus BC, we used to house that through virtual high school. We didn't have enough students to run it in-house. And because of all of our pathways that we offer, which I'll get to on the next slide, we were able to have enough students to hold a BC Calculus in-house. For those who don't know, AP Calc BC is, you know, there's AB and BC, so it's the highest level of AP Calc that you can get to at the high school level. And I'm happy to say that we had 18 students between the two schools this last school year with an average score of 4.25 out of 5, our first time with our students taking the test in-house. So that was awesome, in that, you know, we can attribute to years and years of math teaching for those students, not just that one year. We have many academic leaders at the high school. I think our high school teachers and our principals have really opened up the door for teachers observing each other. Like I said, math has changed, not just at the elementary, it's changed at all levels. And I think sometimes it's hard at the high school level to pick up those new tricks where you're in math world all the time and you're not in elementary, you know, playing all those different roles all day. And teachers have really done a great job observing each other, mentoring each other. We have teachers conducting PD in the co-teaching model in teaching statistics. So I really have to give a shout to my math teachers at the high school level for really helping their peers out, understand the different ways to teach mathematics. And again, we're doing a Star Math pilot in the ninth grade with a very small pocket of students that, you know, along the way, we still need to really identify some really targeted MCAS prep. And again, not that it's all about the test, but before we let these students carry on from ninth grade with potentially significant gaps in their math understanding, really catch that in the beginning. So we're doing that with a small cohort of students in the ninth grade. And then finally, just, I wanted to touch on this because I went to a panel with Desi about multiple pathways, and I thought it was to talk about what we've been doing, and it was to talk about how to start. So again, going somewhere where we're really ahead of the curve on this, and this is part of the reason we've been able to have students in BC Calculus or take a variety of AP courses. We have multiple entry points, which the state is really pushing school districts to do, and we don't need the push because we're there. It can always be worked upon, but we have some great opportunities. So we start with college prep and honors-level classes at the middle school. We offer virtual high school geometry to 20 students between our two middle schools, so that puts them ahead entering high school. For those students that the math, you know, kind of clicks with them later, which I really appreciate this because I was one of those students, you don't have to get it in middle school. We do offer opportunities to double up in high school courses. We offer a summer trig course, so it's a very specific component to calculus that can kind of help you essentially skip a pre-calculus course to, again, get on that advanced track sooner. And that's a fee, you know, a tuitioned course that we offer over the summer for sophomores and juniors. And then finally, and this is a really big thing that the state also pushes that I'm also very happy with, because I did not love calculus, but it was my, it's the only road to go down at some points. But here, we have calculus, we have statistics, and we have computer science principles at the college prep honors and AP level. So we have opportunities that if you are not that calculus student, it's okay. State colleges are also jumping on board here. I've been working with, sitting in some meetings at this state level as well. State colleges are trying to help State colleges are trying to help our students go down a pathway better entering college that they're not stuck in their ninth grade year of college forever in a math class that pertains to nothing that they have skills and are interested in. So we're trying to align ourselves at the high school level to set them up for that successful pathway, and I think we're doing a really great job. So finally, I just want to thank all of you and the people in Plymouth and our teachers. Everything I've talked about today, I know not every worker in every district can talk about new texts and diagnostic testing and all of that, and we're just so lucky to have what we have to work with, and our students get used to working to that level and appreciating it. So thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody. The, my curriculum video is done as well. I'm not going to show it tonight. You can access it, there's a link, it's bit.ly/plymouthstevideo, and you can see that. It's been posted, it's been out for a little while, so it was posted on Facebook, and I think a couple of you actually did see that. So feel free to check that out when you'd like. The, just to highlight some of the things, I'm going to highlight curriculum-wise what we're really trying to accomplish in science, and then highlight for you some of the great things that have been going on in each of the different levels. Phenomena is really where we have been putting all of our eggs. It is something that's been identified in research and science education and has really been a product of the efforts by the state. And I thank our administration for supporting all of us and the work that we get to do at the state level. We get excused from meetings and other events to go to meetings with the Department of Education. And some of you might be, wow, you want to do that, right? But that time that we get to spend at the department really does, in fact, help us in our role. Many times, we're on an island, and so getting to attend meetings with other leaders from the state really helps us advance what we're doing so that when we show up, we're like, we're doing okay, we're on the right path. And so phenomena is one of them. So this is a picture. Believe it or not, this picture is being used in a unit with the early childhood, with the pre-K that I worked with them this year on. And the question that we posed to the pre-K students, as soon as we teach them what a camel is, in case they don't, we have small plastic figurines to show them, is in this picture, where are the camels? And so they immediately go, and much like probably most of you, they're pointing to the black figures that are in that photograph. And after we go through some time of them all, for about 100% of the way, we'll decide that it's the black figures in the picture. We then point out to them that the camels are actually the white lines that are at the bottom of the black figures. And they sit very perplexed, and again, you're talking about three and four-year-olds, and they're not really sure what's going on when you tell them that. And then you try and mimic the exact same thing in the classroom in front of them. So we use flashlights, and we turn the lights off, and we use little plastic camels, and we try to put them in their perspective where this photograph was taken. And we try to put the light source where it was, et cetera. So in order to recreate this picture, the perspective is you are completely on top of the camels, and the light source is basically kind of like the sun is setting, or the sun might be rising in the morning. And so we use this picture with students to not just hook them, and that's the big misconception with phenomena, is that it's not a hook. We use this so that we can help students better understand shadows. And the ultimate goal is actually that they understand how a shadow puppet works. So we're trying to get them to get in front of a light and manipulate their hands to make something, and to understand that there's a light source, there has to be something opaque that blocks light and makes a shadow. And so we start with this picture, and we're doing this same work in all grades right through high school. And so we're trying to extend that hook and get students to start thinking about observable events in nature. And everything that we do in our planning and in our work with students is to try to make meaning out of this phenomena. So it can be in the form of a picture, it can be in the form of a video, it can be a demonstration, it can be something that happened to our students as they were walking to school, sitting at home watching the TV. So it's been very interesting to see teachers try and think through how to develop phenomena. And it's been difficult because most teachers want to make their phenomena very phenomenal. And that has been something that they've had to learn, and they've learned many lessons. And my chemistry staff, I think, took the longest to finally arrive at an idea, and it's just because of you're sitting there and you're coming up with an idea, and it's, wait, how about? And then, you know, 10, 15 minutes later, they're pursuing that. So it's been very successful, and again, it's, we're taking the lead of what the state is working on. In addition to the phenomena, the state is putting these phenomena into the package of a task. In science education, the state has changed their mind several times. And one of the things that they tried to do several years ago in all of our areas was to develop MCU's. They called them Model Curriculum Units. And the units were 85, 90, over 100 pages long. And they were meant as a resource, so a teacher would go to the website, they would pull down the MCU and they would use it, and it would really strip what they were supposed to do in the entire unit. It was way too long. It didn't, teachers didn't want to be told, they wanted guidance, but they didn't want to be told daily what's going on in their classroom. And so it was kind of a failed experiment. You can still access all those documents online, but it wasn't where they wanted to be. At the same time, as we all know, we also don't want to encourage just lesson planning. When we encourage lesson planning, we get our teachers to just think in packets of information. And we lose the connection from one concept to another, from one content area to another. And so what a task is, is larger than a lesson and smaller than a unit. And it's not really based on anything other than the content in terms of its length. So if we're going to take something on like the gas laws, it might be a 10-day task, where if we're going to take something on the difference between weather and climate, it might be a much more smaller minute task, a couple of days. But if we get into the human impact of climate, that might last over the course of several weeks. So this is actually a student work sample. Eighth grade, eighth grade has a standard that talks about how we can use air masses to predict local weather. And kids have to understand what the different air mass types are. And so this particular piece of student work came from one of the tasks that the eighth grade teachers in the district developed. And the goal of this particular piece of the task, students took random data for 20 locations across North America, and they had to figure out a sensible way to plot temperature, precipitation. And after they did that, they also had to plot frequency of tornadoes and hurricanes and blizzards, high snow events. And the goal of that would be that as they placed these big weather events on the map, they were able to see trends in temperature and precipitation. And by seeing the trends in temperature and precipitation, they were able to work backwards into the types of air masses. And so what we're trying to do in each task is the hardest thing for a science teacher to do, and that is not to front-load students with any information. And so we give students practically no information before they start work, and they're using the task to develop the meaning, and in most cases, to answer the phenomena. So in this case, the phenomena was, why do hurricanes pretty much only happen in one section of North America? Why isn't it something that happens everywhere? And so it's that small phenomena that we use throughout the task so that at the very end, we're making meaning of it. So this is work that we're doing, like I said, pre-K through 12. And it's, the hope is that the work that the teachers are doing to get kids to think like this will eventually go away because they will have been doing it year after year. And it is, for the folks that have been extremely successful in doing this, it's been very beneficial, and they have talked at length about the level of thinking that their students are going to. So I'm happy to say that this task, along with four other tasks that were created by our staff, are actually going to be published by the Department of Ed within their task bank, which is scheduled to go up sometime end of the school year and over the summer. So we were successful in some. So in terms of other highlights and things that we are doing along the way, as I mentioned to you, I worked with the Early Childhood Center this year. It actually came out of a PLC, which doesn't always happen. A PLC is teacher-driven, and usually it's what teachers want to do, and that varies, and oftentimes, we are not called to that table. They see us at other times in professional development, and that is not usually one of them. But I was contacted by a teacher at P E C C to do a PLC with a few teachers, and from that, we drafted tasks in every area. We divided standards into areas that they could teach through play. We divided standards to areas that they could focus on in centers. We looked at their progress note statements, and we redrafted some statements. So trying to get it more consistent and supportive with the K and one curricula, and they've been great. I presented at a full staff meeting, and I can't say enough for Denise and her staff and the support that they've had for us this year, so I appreciate that. Insight Observatory, I give a shout-out to Mr. Petrasco. You've all probably at one point or another came in contact with this wonderful technician in our district. He has done great work. He's worked in our planetarium for years now, and he took on a personal project himself, and he put, he hosts telescopes in Pi Town, New Mexico, on the top of a mountain. And we are able to utilize those telescopes for remote imaging purposes. So every year, he picks a few classes to work with, and this year, he worked with an eighth grade class here, fifth grade at Manomet, and also fifth grade at South L. And what they do is they image deep sky objects, like galaxies that you're never going to see with the naked eye, rarely going to be able to see with a telescope that's here, but when you take that telescope to Pi Town, New Mexico, where there's no light pollution, you can really see these images. And then he, what happens is the students put in requests, and in the middle of the night, the images are taken by the telescopes. And then Mike doctors the images with color in Photoshop a little bit to make some colors a little bit more discernible than others. And the relationship that we've had with him, the sign at PCIS, that was actually the background of that sign outside was taken by one of the students. It's just, it's been a great relationship, and I thank him. He's going to back away from the planetarium a little bit next year, but we, I can't say enough about that relationship we've had. Mrs. Colby, talked to you about the robotics program a couple of weeks ago. A lot of you were there. You know how successful it's been. We've done a good job, I think, at organizing that event and really making it the most meaningful that we can in such a short amount of time. And we try and change things up every year, and we're going to continue to do that. But the feedback you get from kids, that's, you know, I wish I could stay here all night. I never want to leave. They're going around and they're humming Star Wars music as they walk from station to station. You know, that's definitely a wheelhouse for some of those kids, and I'm glad that we can provide it. Open SAEED is another Department of Ed initiative that we're going to take on. It is the first open-source curriculum in middle school science that will be available to everyone, anywhere, for free. And it is in partnership with 10 other states, and Massachusetts is one of the lead writers in it. And last year, they did a pilot in the first year with a few districts, and this year, they took on three new districts to pilot in the second and third years, and we were chosen to do that. And so I'm really excited, we're going to be piloting this curriculum at the middle school level. It will come with some financial support from the 1-8 Foundation and also the state through a grant. So we're very excited to see this happening because it's phenomena task-based, and it's exactly what we want to do. And again, it will be free, which is huge in our world to not have to pay for something. Science projects, we recognized four students here tonight. I couldn't be happier to say that, if you didn't notice, this is the first year in over 40 years, we did not have a high school science fair. And maybe you didn't notice, and that's okay. Last year, as a result of our high school science fair, we sent four students to the regional science fair. This year, the way we worked, reworked things, we also had four students attend the regional science fair. What we did was we encouraged students and we encouraged staff to develop independent science projects. So the students you saw here tonight were interested in science, they went out, they tapped the shoulder of some of their teachers. The teacher said, sure, I'll take it on, and they worked with them after-school, before school, K block, communication block, and we couldn't have been happier with that relationship, going in and listening to the conversations during K block where it's a student and a teacher working almost like colleagues in a lab, and they're trying to work through problems and concentrations. Malana, she worked with Juul Juice from our wonderful devices we all know so well, and she took Juul Juice and looked at its effect on yeast growth. And to listen to conversation with her teacher about how to develop concentration solutions was something you, it was great. It was just natural, and it just developed over time, so we couldn't be happier with that. And then the biomed program, we're about to graduate 54 kids, I can't say enough thank you. You know, we did a senior showcase and recognition a couple of weeks ago. It was a great event. We did it at each high school. The kids, with the exception, I did exit surveys with all of them last week, all the seniors, and with the exception, about six students, they're all going into some biom medically related career. Yes, we did lose about 50% of the kids that we enrolled in freshman year. We, I think, accepted about 108 the first year, their first year, and we're graduating 57. And the six kids who are not going into biomedical-related careers, two of them knew in sophomore year, they didn't want to do the program anymore, but stayed because they thought it was the most challenging thing they did in high school. Three of them are going into elementary education, and I couldn't be more happy because of the background in science that they will have, which is outstanding. And then another student has just decided to take a gap year. So it's been a great experience, I think, and through tourniquet training, as I know you heard about, and vetna support, and Michelle's support being on the committee for so long, we've been able to partner with Brigham and Women's and BID Plymouth, and it's just, it's been great. So it just continues to thrive. We have a great upcoming announcement coming in a couple of weeks about that as well. But it's just, it has far exceeded any expectation I ever had, so thank you for that. Growing, growing, growing. The Blake Planetarium, we have put on, since we opened, our grand opening in March of whatever that was last year, we've had 53 public events. We have welcomed over 1,000 guests from the public, and those are public events. Those are ticketed events, those are not school events. We continue to see eight to 12 programs from schools on average per week, where we see kids from preschool to 12th grade. We're very fortunate, our preschoolers are getting into the planetarium two, three, four times during the year because they get to walk down the hall. It's been a great resource for them, and they're, they love it in there. You can't, it's a great feeling. We have 12 licensed programs, so that's above and beyond anything short or for free we have, like we pay for those 12 licenses. And we pay for those licenses. I have a little bit of budget money, but I also pay through the ticketed events for those, and we use those in classes. We recently licensed a 50th year anniversary for the Apollo program, and that'll be shown a lot during the month of July, leading up to the anniversary on July 19. STEM Week, we celebrated Massachusetts' first STEM Week last year, received a governor's citation for the work that we did here in Plymouth for that. And we're going to continue to participate in that this upcoming fall, but we're waiting to hear a theme from the state on that. Again, I mentioned the work that we've done with Desi, and then just the community partnerships. We were very fortunate, Captain Johns gave us a great donation that we took almost 200 students on a whale watch a couple of weeks ago from Plymouth North and Plymouth South High Schools. The Plymouth Gardening Club, Southeast Mass Pine Barrens have donated Sacropia cocoons. They do this. They're very rare. They're the largest moth in North America. I'm not an expert, I just know simple things about it. They don't have any digestive organs, they only live for two weeks out of the year. They reproduce, and then they cocoon themselves again. And the Southeast Mass Pine Barrens folks go out and collect these, and in the fall, they gift us a whole bunch of them. And we split them up from preschool right through grade five in all the schools across the district. So they have Sacropia moths, and they will be hatching, watch social media for it, because they'll be hatching any day. As soon as the nice weather hits in May, they emerge, like I said, they're alive for two weeks' time, they reproduce, and then they go for two weeks' time, they reproduce, and then they go back to sleep. So, it's very cool for our kids. They love watching it, and again, they've been watching it all year. So, it's through partnerships like that, we would never be able to do that ourselves. And so, it's, it's really through the generosity of a lot of community organizations that we are able to do what we do, uh, as well as we do it. And that's my presentation, so I'm going to hand it off to Rob.
Good evening. It's, uh, time for social studies, which is the best subject.
It's on, it's on.
Okay, good. I thought they cut the mic, is it social studies? Um, so, we have a lot to talk about. There are a lot of new things going on, uh, in the state for social studies, and also here in Plymouth. We have our first updated framework of standards for social studies, K through 12 here in Massachusetts for the first time since 2003. Those were formally adopted, uh, last June. I had the opportunity to be on the, uh, panel that reviewed the old frameworks and revised them for these, uh, this new round of, uh, frameworks. It was a really interesting experience, and as you can imagine with social studies, uh, not everybody agrees on interpretation of history, or current events, or civics. So, the fact that, that we even have revised standards is a pretty sizable accomplishment in its own right. Uh, and then, the next step is implementing those standards. So, that has been a lot of the work that we've done this year, uh, here in Plymouth. The department has given districts a year to unpack the new standards, and then, um, they're asking for implementation in the 2019-2020 school year. Uh, we did a lot of work over the summer, some amazing educators doing curriculum work over the summer, um, and then, uh, myself doing some work with elementary, to make sure that when teachers arrived this past September, they would have learning outcomes, uh, for every unit K through, uh, 11, U.S. History II, um, that were aligned to the new standards, so that if I had teachers that were ready to dive into this this year, and let this year be that kind of experiment year with the new frameworks, that we could support them in that. Um, so, we've actually been implementing the new frameworks, uh, six through grades, uh, sorry, six, eight, and nine through 11, uh, this year, and the next year, we'll be kindergarten all the way through grade 12 with the new frameworks. So, we've had a little bit of a jump on that, and with anything else, when you are the canary in the coal mine, you find out what works and, and what you're going to tweak. Um, and we'll be doing some summer work around that as well. But, it's really exciting, because, uh, if you've taken a look at the original frameworks from 2003, they were very comprehensive, and so are the new frameworks. Uh, the old frameworks were 193 pages long, uh, and, uh, we didn't, you know, we're social studies teachers, and we think everything matters that ever happened, so we didn't really do a good job cutting that down. But, I think what, what we've really done a lot of work around is making social studies engaging and dynamic and relevant for students. Uh, I think we've all probably experienced a, a history lesson in our own schooling, where it was kind of, "Okay, so, here's what happened in history, and I'm going to tell you that, and you're going to take notes, and I'm going to tell you why that matters in history, and then in two weeks, you're going to take a test, and you're going to give that right back to me." That's not the type of social studies that we're engaging in here in the Plymouth Public Schools. What we want for social studies is, we want a social studies education that aligns to the, uh, new practice standards, so similar to what Kelly was talking about in math. We have these sets of skills that not only any historian would have as a historian, but what, what should a good citizen, an effective citizen, be able to do? So, every teacher who teaches social studies in the district got this poster on day one this year, and this is what we're working around, is we reconstruct social studies education. The first thing is to be able to demonstrate civic knowledge, skills, and dispositions. The way I like to explain that to folks is, civic knowledge is your three branches. Civic skills is how those branches interact, uh, and then, dispositions is what you want those branches to do. Um, and, and that's kind of focus point number one of this new framework is civics. If we look at kind of the scope and sequence, there weren't a whole lot of changes as far as what's being taught in each year, but the noticeable differences are twofold here in Plymouth. One is that our seventh-grade World Geography course, which is just an amazing course, it was a course that I took here at PCIS, and like, "Wow, I love social studies," and here I am. Um, that, that's a course that's going to transition to, uh, early world history, so it will give students an understanding of civilizations and empires from roughly 500 to 1500, but through the lens of geography. So, understanding how geography affected the way that history played out in that time period, and also, how are those places in the world connecting today to that history? The other significant change is that in grade eight, every student in Massachusetts starting next year, uh, will be taking, uh, a civics course in grade eight. And right now, most districts in Massachusetts, uh, teach that world history course in eighth grade, so there's a lot of shifting that has to be done. Here in Plymouth, we've been offering a course called Civic History in eighth grade for quite a while, which is Early American History Through the Lens of Civics and Government. So, that's not too much of a shift for our teachers, uh, and so, we're already, we've kind of hit the ground running on the, the Early American History Foundations of Government component of that. Uh, I have to give a shout-out to all of the teachers in the, the department, but specifically, the grade-eight teachers who've decided to pilot the new civics course this year. Um, so, at both schools, we have students who have taken the new civics course, and it is entirely focused on civics today. So, there's an element of, you know, the foundations of democracy in Greece and Rome, there's the, uh, history of our constitution through the early republic, but, uh, most of the course is, how does civics work today, and what's your role in that? So, uh, new topics that they are exposed to in that course include the three branches, but it also includes media literacy. Uh, if I'm going to be an informed citizen, I need to know where to get that information. I need to know how to discern that information, whether or not it's fake, or accurate, or helpful, uh, and then be able to use that information to develop, like we said, those, those civic dispositions. Um, and then, it's also bringing in the local components. State and local government is something that was not in the previous framework, that will now be part of that civics course. So, through that, we're really excited to connect students with, uh, you know, active learning in civics, and I can talk in a few moments about, uh, some examples of the great work that's already happening in that course. So, we are in an unpacking year, but I put that in, you know, quotation marks, because some of our teachers have just decided they're going to dive right in, and they're doing an amazing job. Uh, next year's our full implementation. I will just briefly mention, there is a state assessment component to this. Uh, the, as you may know, the law actually requires students to graduate from high school having passed a history MCAS. Uh, that history MCAS, as you may remember, was put on hold in 2009, uh, and it has, it's still on hold. Uh, the plan for, uh, moving forward with that is still kind of taking shape with the department, but, uh, they've convened an assessment-development committee for a grade-eight civics assessment. They thought, "We're going to start here," because this is the, the newest part, this is the part that we really want get, to get kids engaged in. We want data on that. Um, so, I have the, uh, the pleasure of serving on that assessment-development committee. We've only met twice. Um, I can't tell you what specifically we're working on. They seized my passport, they threatened my license, but I will tell you that the commissioner has been very straightforward, that, uh, they see social studies assessment as their opportunity to, um, pilot this new approach to assessment, um, where it's task-based, and it's more about deep learning than compliance and cut scores. So, I think what you're going to see, uh, shortly, is that the state will be piloting some sort of assessment in grade-eight civics in the next year or two, that asks students to plug into active citizenship rather than memorize, uh, the three branches. Those matter, as we'll talk about in a second, but, kind of taking it to that next level on assessment. We also have been engaging in a lot of ongoing PD and support for teachers. If you have a new framework, even if it's just been tweaked a little bit, you're going to need a lot of support with that, because for some teachers, this is going to be a big shift in the way they approach their content. For other teachers, they already use these practice standards regularly, but they have new content to work with. So, uh, we have engaged a couple different ways. Uh, the first year has been, "Okay, let's pick something that, a direction we all want to move in, and use that as our starting point to unpacking these frameworks," and that is inquiry, inquiry-based social studies. And, we're looking at, what, what does inquiry-based social studies look like in K5, in six through eight, in nine through 12? Uh, we will continue that work around inquiry, but next year is that first year, like I said, that every teacher in the district will be implementing the new framework. So, I'm going to be making a lot of space for teachers to just collaborate during our professional development time. So, rather than me kind of training them on a new technique or skill, I'm going to take a seat, and I'm going to support them, and they're going to be sitting, and they're going to be developing new assessments, developing new tasks, what worked, what didn't, um, looking over student results and, and drawing conclusions. That's the work we're going to really engage in mostly next year for PD. Uh, and then, quickly, uh, new resources at grade three, we are adopting an updated version of our text, Massachusetts Our Home. It's a Massachusetts history text from, uh, the Wampanoag 10,000 years ago, people of the first light through the American Revolution. Uh, and it's also updated to include, uh, new units of learning on, uh, state and local government. At grade three, we're going to teach third graders about town meeting, and I'm really, really excited to see what a third-grade town meeting looks like. Uh, and, uh, we, at grade seven, like I said, we're switching to world history and geography, so that'll be a new text adoption, uh, for next year, and they'll be using the existing, uh, geography textbook to supplement that, so that is a resource that's still very valuable to us. Uh, and at grade eight, I'm really excited, we're bringing in a program called Generation Citizen. So, something I haven't talked about yet, again, we have so much to talk about, uh, is the, there, in addition to the passing of the new frameworks, there's a new law that was passed, a civics bill. And what that law does is require, uh, school districts to provide, uh, a civics project opportunity to students once by grade eight, and then, uh, once again in high school. So, we're in the, uh, early stages of, of deciding what that'll look like at the high school level, but we're going to move forward next year, uh, starting with next year's grade-eight classes. Every student in Plymouth will engage in an action civics project through the Generation Citizen curriculum. Um, and what that does is, it teaches students how to identify an issue in the community, develop consensus first within the class, and then the larger community around what should be done around that issue, and then, actually engage in field research and advocacy tactics, and then reflect on the effectiveness of their work advocating for that cause. Uh, it is, it's really exciting, and, uh, I can't wait to, I'm sure they will be here, uh, very shortly advocating for, for change. It's going to be good. Uh, so, that's what we're doing in grade eight. So, I just want to bring you back to these practice standards real quick. Uh, so, other things that we're asking students to do, uh, and this is, by the way, at every grade level, I'll show you in a second how we're going to tackle this at kindergarten. Develop focused questions or problem statements and conduct inquiries. To be able to organize information from multiple primary and secondary sources, analyze it for point of view, and bias, and relevance, then take that information and say, "Okay, what does this mean for me and my disposition here in social studies?" And then, be able to argue or explain conclusions, and then, take informed action, hopefully, based on what they learned, knowing what they now know in that civics class. Like, what are you going to do to engage in civics? That's really the big question here, uh, in the new practice standards. So, like I said, we're focused on inquiry to start, that starting point of, why don't we frame all of our social studies learning around questions? Because ultimately, that's how society works, right? We have questions all the time in debates, in elections, uh, at town meeting, that's how democracy functions. We have to decide which direction we want to go, and which policy we want to engage in. So, in social studies, what that looks like is, we're going to ask students two types of questions. Compelling questions are big-picture questions. They're rigorous, they're intellectually meaty, and they're engaging. Uh, and then, supporting questions are very targeted questions that help kids scaffold through the content and knowledge that they're going to need to be able to develop an informed answer to that big-picture question. Uh, so, that basically revolves around these questions, the tasks they will engage in to develop an answer to that question, and along the way, they're going to be engaging in sources, primary sources, secondary sources, visual sources, text sources. Um, so, that's, that's very student-centered, and we do a lot of that already, and we're going to build that out K-12. So, I want to just show you a few examples of these compelling questions, uh, because they scaffold kindergarten all the way through grade 12. So, for example, in kindergarten, we're going to ask students, "What does it mean to be responsible?" Right? And, and my favorite thing, by the way, about compelling questions is that they, they are hopefully enduring, so, uh, I might ask my ninth-grade students what it means to be responsible. I might ask, uh, yeah, I might ask anybody in my life sometimes, like, "Was that really responsible?" But, but that idea that, you know, these shift over time, but they're enduring, they're compelling, so what does it mean to be responsible? And through that question, students are going to learn what it means to be a responsible member of your classroom community, of your household, of your soccer team, right? So, it's inquiry-based social studies. Uh, in third grade, when students learn about exploration, uh, in fourth grade as well, we're going to ask them, "Was the New World really new?" Right? So, when I learned, uh, about exploration, and probably most people as well, it was just called the New World, because Europe found it in 1492. And getting students to think about that idea of, huh, before the pilgrims arrived, uh, there were European fishermen and explorers that got here decades prior. Before they got here, they were the Wampanoag, right? The people of the first light for 10,000 years. So, getting students to understand this through a compelling question, you know, students like, like to challenge things. So, if we're challenging this paradigm of what we call the New World, hopefully, that's engaging for them, and then they're going to continue and engage in, in these questions. Uh, in sixth grade, when we look at ancient civilizations, what makes a society great? Uh, we talk about Rome, and Greece, and, and China, and its golden age, uh, but that's a very enduring question, right? What makes a society great today? We have a jumping-off point now to connect something that seems very irrelevant, because it's ancient, to today's society. Uh, in eighth grade, I love this one, "Who does Congress work for?" So, this is a trick question for the students. Uh, you know, we're hopefully getting that, the, uh, the people, duh, next. Uh, and then, what we do is, we take them through a series of tasks where they're going to look at constituent work, they're going to look at, uh, how the role of, um, interest groups, and, and what role they play in the legislative process, the political parties, and then they're going to develop an informed opinion and say, "You know what? I think Congress works for the people, or the interest groups, or the party, or some combination of that." But, they're engaging in really high-level critical thinking about civics. Uh, in ninth grade, "When is war justified?" And we use this one actually, uh, a unit, and then two units later, we use it again. We ask them, "In World War I, was it justified?" They'll probably come to the conclusion, "Meh, not really." And then, in World War II, they're going to have to say, "Well, wait a minute, we just had one, and it wasn't justified, and now this time, we have to fight fascism," and they're going to have to reconcile that dissonance, right, in history and social studies, and that's the type of thinking we're looking for. And then, uh, in U.S. History, "Was the American Revolution inevitable?" Right? So, we use that terminology on purpose, we hold these truths to be self-evident. Uh, was it self-evident? Was it inevitable? That critical lens, uh, is hopefully engaging and rigorous at the same time. So, the idea here is that if a student starts by answering that question, "What does it mean to be responsible?" in kindergarten, they will be very comfortable answering these questions as they scaffold for complexity all the way through grade 12, and then, hopefully, when we send them out the door with a diploma, they will begin to ask their own questions and seek answers in a responsible way. Uh, so, this is all part of the new civics here, and I'm really excited about it. Uh, I say it's new, but we have a lot of things that are already great about civics here in Plymouth Public Schools. So, we have the civics course, we have the civics law. Um, we've created this new civics course, we've talked about Generation Citizen, but we have civic opportunities K through 12 that are just incredible. Uh, a few that have happened recently are the, the civics be put on by the League of Women Voters. Uh, we had students from both high schools attend Law Day, uh, put on by the Plymouth County Bar Association. Uh, we've had students participate in student, State Student Government Day. You have student representatives to the school committee, which, as you mentioned, uh, earlier, are not on every school committee, even though it's, it's actually state law that they're supposed to be. So, uh, this idea that we're engaging students in the, the decision-making process, that itself is, is civics education. Uh, and what we're trying to do is continue to widen out these opportunities for students to engage in these experiences as well. Uh, we've also added, uh, new programming in, in history that relates to those same critical thinking skills. Uh, some of you were able to join us for our first-ever National History Day competition back in January, and it was really exciting. National History Day is, is effectively science fair for history. They're given a theme, and they have to pick a topic in history, do research, intensive research, and make, advocate for a position. Uh, why was this particular topic related to that theme? So, the theme this year was, uh, tragedy and triumph in history. We had some incredible projects. We actually had, uh, a few dozen students go on to the district competition, and we had one, uh, group of ninth-grade students actually become state finalists, uh, in their category, which is really good for the first year in that program. They did phenomenal work. Uh, we had a student at Plymouth South High School receive a special award at the district level, the Frederick Douglass Award, from, uh, the Mass Humanities Council, and they will be receiving, that student will be receiving a cash prize, and Plymouth South will also be getting $500 to enhance their collection of African-American history resources for the school library. So, all of this through the, the vehicle of inquiry, right? Like, what makes a tragedy or triumph in history, and students finding something that they find interesting and connecting to that question. they find interesting and connecting to that question. So we have a lot going on with civics, but just the last thing I'd like to, to highlight tonight is the next direction for our global learning here in Plymouth. So I've been working with a lot of different people, teachers and students and administrators, to put together something that we're calling Global Learning at Plymouth Public Schools. We have a lot of tracks here based on student interest and, and career choices and pathways as we're, we're talking about. So this is a new pathway that we're going to begin with the incoming freshman class, where if students complete a few different things, they're going to receive a global diploma recognition at graduation. So the components of this are, are actually pretty rigorous. They will have to complete 30 credits of global coursework, so that's courses that we already offer here in the Plymouth Public Schools at the high school level that have some sort of global component to the curriculum. So world history and world literature, but also looking at, you know, Irish history, international relations, looking at our arts program and, and the international component to the music that kids sing in chorus, or the art that they study in visual arts. So they would complete 30 hours of, 30, sorry, credit hours of that coursework. They would also engage in an international experience. So we have so many trips and international experience opportunities already here in Plymouth. If a student is on the Plymouth International Course Trip, if they go to the Dominican Republic, if they go to Iceland with our, our faculty leaders, then they're going to take that, that's going to be part of this program as well. We're going to ask students to complete 30 hours of community service over their high school career with a multicultural focus, so that kind of think global, act local component of service. Four years of a foreign language, three of, four years of a foreign language, counting their first year here at the middle schools if they go on to Level Two, say, of French or Spanish in ninth grade. And then all of this comes together, and what will happen is it'll be synthesized, right? Here's that inquiry, here's that higher-order thinking again. So students who complete all of these, that want to earn the global diploma from Plymouth Public Schools, will put together a capstone presentation where they address the compelling question, what makes me a global citizen in the year 2023 or 2024? And they're drawing from their international experience, from their coursework, from their service, from their language fluency, and they're developing this, this presentation that says, I am a global citizen because of all of this work that I did here in the Plymouth Public Schools. So we are, you know, just in the early, early stages of this project, but we're really excited about it because we're, we're hoping that it will do two things. One, it will validate all of the work that a lot of students are already doing to become global citizens. And two, provide some sort of framework to say that, you know, this is how we educate our students for a very interconnected global community in 2019. So a lot of things going on, very exciting time for social studies, and I just want to say thank you for your support of the program.
Wow. The floor is open, committee members with comments, observations, or questions. Ms. Fager.
All the presentations were excellent, so thank you for sharing everything with us. I did want to extend an invitation, Rob, to come to No Place for Hate and really talk about that global citizenship diploma, because I really think that is something that our committee, if you need help or want help with, is something that they will just be so excited to, to join in on. So if you want to come give a presentation, second Thursday of whatever month works for you.
Yeah.
It's always, every time you guys come to us, it's pretty clear that, you know, the work that you do for this educational community is the lifeblood of the community. Two things I want to point out tonight about your, about everything that you said. The first one is that all four of you, although you're unique to your, your focus, you all converged on probably two main points. One was, we're always moving forward. We're always going to the next level, whatever the discipline is. We're looking, we're going to the state level, we're reading, we're finding the best practice, and we're bringing it here. And the other one was, we're bringing our children's ability to think to the next level. And that's how you make a global citizen, I believe. So that's wonderful, wonderful. Ms. Hunt.
Amazing. I love this, probably one of my favorite presentations because you get to kind of hear about what's going on in all the schools. And one question, maybe it's because you went last, it's more in my, my head, but on the civics bill, from what I remember, there's a, there is like a, a funding component with it too? But I think it's for more like underprivileged or lower-income schools or areas, but are we going to, would we get any of that funding?
That's a great question, Ms. Hunt. Thank you for asking. I track bills and, I track bills and laws and state budgets for fun, and my wife calls me a nerd. So there was, there were a few components, yeah, of that civics bill. The main one was the project. There was also the creation of a civics education trust fund. So it's a public-private partnership. The donations can be matched by outside entities, probably philanthropic organizations, foundations. But the, it called for $1.5 million in funding by the state legislature. That money would be used for professional level, for teachers, for resources to get kids out there into their communities and advocating and engaging in civics. So that is a, a funding issue, so it, now it's been established in the law, but it has to go through this, this budget process. So just so you know, yeah, I don't know if you're familiar with budget processes. Yeah. So the, the House of Representatives has not included it in their budget for the next fiscal year, nor has the Senate. However, Senator Harriet Chandler, who was the lead sponsor of the civics bill, has filed an amendment to the Senate budget, and I know they're debating amendments starting tomorrow, again, because I'm a nerd. And her, her amendment would include that funding in the Senate budget. So we're still waiting to hear if that'll actually make it through to the, the final cut of this budget and be signed by the governor. If that's the case, then that will be available to all school districts, but there'll be priority given to underserved and underrepresented populations.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I just wanted to say thank you all, the presentations are all very thorough. For me, it's, it's really neat to see the minutia of what you do. It's a lot of work, so thank you. I know with framework and implementation, you know, we kind of see some of the end results, so to see what you do every day, thank you very much. Also, I know Vedna and I think Margie, you were there too, when we had done School Committee on the Road here at PCIS, we went into one of the classrooms, a grade eight classroom, and they were, it was very interactive and very hands-on, and they were going in, I forget the teacher, but he was going into the opening where students were assigned a specific figure in history pertaining to the Constitution. And they were debating. And it was really kind of interesting to see the kids, not how I really grew up, you know, reading a book like, like you said, aforementioned, you read a book, you took what you learned, and you, and you took a test, but to see them so interactive. And the other thing I really picked up from each presentation was that, I think you had, had said you were in a meeting with Desi, and these were things that were going to be applied that we were already doing. And I feel like that is sort of a pattern I see, and it's, it's just, it's impressive. So, thank you and job well done. Very, very, very detailed.
Thank you, thank you so much for being here. Now the rain has stopped, you can get out.
No.
Yes. Okay. I know, I know that Manomet's been waiting, but we need to take a break, Manomet. So come on down to the table, make yourselves comfortable, and we'll take a 10-minute break and then come back and have that presentation. I'd like to bring this meeting back into order from our brief recess, and we have a school improvement plan, Dr. Maestas.
Yes, tonight we have the school improvement plan for Manomet Elementary School, and Dr. Frain is here with his school council to present the school improvement plan, so welcome. Thank you for coming, thank you for waiting.
Thank you so much for having us here this evening. And what I'd like to do first is to just introduce the members of our school council with us here this evening. To my left, my far left, Matt Riard, and he's a parent representative at Manomet Elementary. Chris Kane is serving on our school council this year. We're very proud to have Chris with us as a former student at Manomet Elementary School who's come back to meet with us every month for this group, so we're very, very pleased with that. Janine Hatch is one of our fifth-grade teachers. Laura Rush is one of our parents, and Christine Kane, Chris's mom, is also a parent at Manomet Elementary School. So we're thrilled to have all of them with us. And the other thing I'd just like to mention, we've got a few members of our group who can't be here tonight, but one person in particular who is leaving our school council this year because she's retiring, who has probably been, I would say she's probably been to about 150 or so school council meetings over the past 15 to 20 years, is Debbie Miller, and we're, we're, she's a tremendous loss to us as a school community. We're very happy for her, but she's also been a big part of our school council over the years, so we're very happy for her as she sets off on her retirement shortly. I'd like to thank you all, first of all, tonight, for all of the resources that, you know, you just heard about many through the program update that impact our school at Manomet. We're going to talk about a number of others now, and we thank you for all those different resources. I think you'll see a theme as we're talking about our different objective and goal areas tonight. Two different things that should come through, and one of those is that it's not about what new resources are we pulling in, it's more about how are we connecting and using the resources that we have to maximize them? And then there are some new, new pieces as well, but those making, making connections, not just with the resources that we have in terms of things, but making connections in terms of the different people, and making sure that we're accessing all the people that we have available to us in this district to maximize student achievement. So those are things that hopefully you'll, you'll hear resonate tonight. For our presentation tonight, there are three portions. The first one is I'd like to just update you on a few of the wonderful things that are going on at our school that we're really proud of. And then I'd like to share a little bit of stakeholder feedback from our biannual survey. And then our school council members will be giving you an update on each of the different four, each of the four different objective areas. So let me just go ahead and start. So our school council members, we are a 10-member team this year, and it's been great to have a nice big group to be able to do a lot of the brainstorming, particularly in this year when we're formating, formulating the, the plan for the next three years to come. This is something that we're really proud of in terms of our aggregate performance within the state accountability formula. We were thrilled when we, when we got the news this fall that we had been rated within the 91st percentile in the state through the new accountability formula. And over the course of the last six years, we've been proud each year with, with each of those different ratings, but we were particularly thrilled this year to see that jump within this new accountability rating formula. And there are some different metrics that they use within this new formula that I think account for some of that, but, you know, a lot of hard work across the board that we're very, very proud of there. So this next slide here talks about something that we've worked very hard on over the course of these past several years, and that's addressing chronic absenteeism. Three years ago, two, three years ago, when we set forth on this, we weren't really calling it chronic absenteeism as defined by 18 days or more absent. That's the, the formal definition from the state right now. We just knew that we needed to increase the percentage of days that students were coming to school. And so you have to start somewhere, so we do some blanket measures that are building wide, but then we also started sitting down, myself and then our school psychologist, Suzanne Schmiedler, and Luanne Nemis, our school nurse, sitting down on a regular basis, on a weekly basis, to get down to the individual student level and to really try to look at what some of the individual factors are that are driving the absenteeism where it takes place. So we've, we've met, and we've met on a regular basis, and it's something where, when we identify situations that are health-related, physical health-related, where it may be something where that may be Luanne who's making phone calls or something, or it might be something with a social-emotional piece, it might be Suzanne that's making those phone calls. But a tremendous resource to us in this work also has been for those situations where we've reached out and we haven't gotten the response that we needed, and we still wanted to provide supports to those families and try to make a difference in terms of those percentages, has been our attendance officer, John Amorall. He's been, he's probably been over at Manomet Elementary School 20 times over the course of this year to help us with ongoing case management situations, to not only meet with parents at our school and meet with us, but also get out to the households and help us provide that follow-up that we need, and make sure that the parents are aware of their obligations with regard to the need to have the boys and girls at school, not only their obligations, but also the supports that are in place. So we're trying to provide those supports and help those families know that we're not here to simply talk about the fact that they're absent and that that's a terrible thing, but we're also trying to problem solve. So we've done a lot of that, and we've really moved the needle quite a bit in these last few years, about a 50% reduction in the percentage of students who fall into that chronically absent, 18 days or more per year category. We'd love to drive that down to zero. We know that there are situations that come up where somebody may have significant medical situation, so I don't think the number will ever be to zero. We hope it gets there. But our next challenge with this particular area is to now look at, okay, we've driven that number down, let's at least maintain that while we're also looking at, say, students who may be in double-digit absences, you know, from 10 to 18, because we'd love to knock that number down as well. So that work is ongoing. And then recently, over the course of this past month, we received two grants, so we were thrilled to receive a phone call from the American Tower Foundation that they had granted us over $17,000 to basically give our computer lab quite a makeover with 30 new iPads, a new cart, a 3D printer, and also a laptop, a really nice laptop to be able to operate that 3D printer. Those types of machines need certain things to be able to run on them and run quickly and run well, so it's something where it's nice to be able to have that set up. Now, we're really trying to convert our computer lab into more of a maker space, where we have the iPads and, and table space for them, the 3D printer materials, more Chromebook use in there, and less reliance on the desktop computers. So the desktop computers more and more are leaving, and then the Chromebook piece is that portable technology, and they were trying to have a little bit more flexibility in the computer lab. The other grant that we were thrilled to receive this year is support from Entergy, over $3,000 toward our after-school theater workshop program. It's been, over the course of the last, I would say, 15 years, over $60,000 from the Entergy Corporation, so we were very pleased to be able to receive those funds as well. We administered a stakeholder survey this winter, and it was something where we did have 61 respondents for a total percentage of about 28% of our family population. So 215 families at Manomet, total enrollment is just under 270 students, but 61 families responded. We used the Likert scale as well as on, on the, on the multiple-choice items. We also used four open response areas to sort of see if we can get some narrative feedback as well. One of the neat things that we were able to do with this survey is we sat as a council and thought it would be a good idea to add a couple of items, but what I'm reporting out here tonight are those items that were common to both surveys. So it was nice for us to be able to look two years later with the exact same items worded the exact same way to see, you know, how, how the perception was within this, within the family stakeholder community. So here, a lot of numbers here, but you can see numbers one through, actually, there are 20, 20-some-odd items there even because some of them are multi-part, but you can see from 2017 and 2019. One of the things that we were pleased with is 2017's ratings from our stakeholders were quite high, and we were able to at least maintain that, give or take a little bit in each of those different items. There were no really significant jumps or drops in those areas, which we were pleased with, given the fact that they were strong to begin with. So all of them, the mean, mean for the responses on all of them were between 3.39 and 3.89. We used a one-through-four scale, so it's something where three to four, between three and four, we were very, very pleased with. Items one through four were areas when they talked about academic rigor, and, and they were positive ratings, they were strong positive ratings, but relative to the entire set of survey items, it's an area that we want to look at and say, gee, why were those particular items a little bit lower than some of the other areas? So strong throughout, but we want to look and say, okay, where, where are the areas that we can look to either, it may be something where, maybe those may not even be indicative of an academic rigor issue, it may be a communicating certain aspect of the academic rigor that's in place, or maybe there are certain pieces that, that we can bolster. So we're going to look at those particular areas. And then items five, six, and 12, we were pleased to see that those are all relatively high, and those all had to do with positive connections between students and staff, so we were very pleased to see that. So from the narrative responses, we, we had several takeaways and different recurring pieces that came up there. There's always a request within these items to look at what we can do in terms of any additional extracurricular areas, and we have several different pieces in place at Manomet Elementary School and throughout the district. One of them that came up last time when we did this and came up again was to expose students to foreign languages. It's something we don't have during the day, but we do have something, there is an opportunity that we're able to send out that can be housed right in the school for an after-school club with regard to foreign language, so we're going to send that out. It's a sort of a pay for enrollment in that, so, you know, and it's a significant cost, but we'll put that out there and see what the interest is with regard to that. It's a first step to be able to have an offering in that area. The other piece they talked about was the technology club, and with all of the technology that we're bringing on over the course of this past year, I think that it's, it's a great time to be able to reach some new heights with regard to some of those different things. The second bullet there, there were several stakeholders referencing the need to consider those students who are working above grade level and need that push. I think you're going to hear tonight, within our plan around the, with the workshop model and some of these different areas, where we're looking to do just that and continue to break out instruction to the individual student and small group level, which I think helps meet that need. And then there will be a range of comments. And then there were a range of comments expressing the need to bolster instruction around healthy lifestyle and healthy choices and pro-social behavior instruction. So we also have some areas tonight in the plan where we'll talk about that. Okay, so the goal areas are up here. And I know you have the actual plan in electronic format. We have members of the council who are going to share some of the highlights from each of those four areas. So I'm going to hand it off first to Matt Reardon, who's going to talk about objective one.
So objective one, review and refine norms associated with several processes and activities at Manhamett Elementary School to enhance the functioning of each. There's several positive things happening within the existing structures. Taking a step back and looking at the small adjustments that can be made will have an overall, a much larger outcome or a much larger difference being made. Systematic changes can be made to better ensure consistent approaches. And there's three examples. The first is involving the child study process. Regular meetings are being held for child study for academic and social-emotional reasons. There'd be plans to discuss as a staff what data points will be consistently needed to ensure the most productive brainstorming. Another area of emphasis will be the way information is synthesized from a wide range of data sources available in order to make them more actionable. With each year, as you know, there's more and more ways to monitor student progress and make instructional decisions. Some of this information comes from the state, while other valuable data comes from formative assessments conducted by classroom teachers on an ongoing basis. A standing group will be formed to help make decisions about how best to ensure the consistency of approach while at the same time sharing best practices for using data. Third area that will be refined is the transition experience that students, students coming into or leaving Manhamett Elementary School. The obvious that most students encounter would be kindergarten and fifth grade. But for many others, there's some sort of in-between those time periods that this is going to take place. And norming this work will center primarily on the communication with family members.
Next area is being presented by Janine Hatch.
Okay, so the second objective, we were calling our getting connected work. Here, we're seeking to increase the coordination and utilization of existing staff resources and other resources to enhance integration across all curricular areas. We are truly fortunate to have great resources in the form of tools and materials for use with students. However, far more valuable are the many resources that we have in the form of people. With that comes a challenge of making sure we are systematically providing ongoing opportunities for building staff to make meaningful connections with district staff and to make this happen on an embedded basis within the school day. We have a lot of talent. And when we increase the amount of the dialogue, good things are going to happen for our students. So one of the ways that we are hoping to accomplish this is grade-level teams will be scheduled for sessions with the science and social studies coordinators for the purpose of looking across curricular areas to see where the best opportunities exist for addressing multiple content area standards within single units and lessons. Making these connections should not only help us make more effective use of time, but also help students see how this learning is all related. Another way we hope to accomplish, our goal is that we've been extremely fortunate to have an influx of technology at our school recently. But now it's time to make sure systematically that staff members are well-coached on how to best connect with the technology, with what the technology can do to help. And by using a professional development through the coaching model, we can accomplish this. The third way is within all of our grade levels, each has at least three project-based learning experiences in place in their work with their students. We are going to review these by grade level and seek further cross-curricular connections that can be made within the flow of this work. And, okay, lastly, any work that deals with making connections would be lacking if it didn't include how we help students transfer the learning within the classroom into their world outside of school. Infusing opportunities for this to happen will be an area of emphasis during a combination of both staff meetings and in-service time.
Area three is being presented by Lori Rush.
This is our Working on the Workshop objective. So this year, much work has been done to lay down the foundation for the effective implementation of the workshop model at all grade levels. Staff is now seeking to expand the repertoire of pedagogy utilized within the workshop model in mathematics, reading, and writing. This year, all grade-three teachers received extensive professional development on how to significantly enhance their daily implementation of the math workshop model. Teachers next year will continue to promote this model, their strategies across other grade levels under the guidance of a math coach. I think we heard a lot about that earlier this evening. In this upcoming year, the same intensive training will be in place for all fourth-grade teachers as they work with their peers throughout the district. Within the literacy coaching model, staff will continue to support paraprofessionals and certified interventionists with embedded professional development. This focus will be on how to best practices and how to make an impact within the inclusive inclusion model as we move closer and closer to a full inclusion model at MES as soon as possible. All necessary physical materials will be added to ensure that classrooms are equipped to implement the reading, writing, and math workshop.
Okay, the focus of the next objective is on differentiating to meet social and emotional learning needs. This is work that is consistently changing and constantly needs to be revisited and refined based upon the individual needs of students. Their needs change all of the time, so the approach their learning does too. One of the most impactful aspects of this work continues to be the regular meetings between the school psychologist, the school nurse, and the building administration to discuss the needs at the individual student level and then seek people in the building to match the supports with those needs. So every student is treated as an individual and all of their needs are met. Our staff works tirelessly to make sure each child has what they need day in and day out. The implementation of a more systematic approach to K-5 health instruction should help us to raise awareness of students as to their own social-emotional well-being and thus help them to better advocate for their own, sorry, I'm going to try to get through without coughing, needs than what otherwise might not have been possible. They might not have the tools to communicate how they're feeling or what they need to help them learn better in the classroom setting. Through classroom teachers' implementation of the Second Steps program, individual students have the opportunity to find their voice as they discuss real-life examples of how to promote pro-social behaviors.
At this point, if there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Questions or comments from committee members? Ms. Badger?
Another great presentation. And it's funny that you mentioned the connection. I went to one, actually, one thing that I'll talk about in a little bit from when I was at the National School Committee Conference. It was all about connections. It was social-emotional learning and how do you, what do you teach the kids? And it was all about the connections that individuals are having. And we obviously know that, but making that step to, you know, be more purposeful is really important. So thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So for our viewers who are following the meeting, every year, we send committee members to the National School Board Conference. And we, those conferences always have just really amazing, state-of-the-art and best practices. And we would like members who went to the conference to come back to the school committee meeting and to the town of Plymouth and bring back some of the results of having been to that conference this year. So we have a chance now to hear from Ms. Badger, Ms. Haywood, and Ms. Hunt. So you guys can go in any order you want, or whoever wants to go first. Ms. Hunt, go ahead.
Okay, sure. This year, our conference was in Philadelphia, and it was really exciting. And one of the best parts for me, and I'm sure anybody that goes with me knows, it's the networking and getting to share stories and ideas with people from other states and even Massachusetts. And I get a chance to see some people that I haven't, you know, seen in a while. And we actually were really lucky this time where, in the past, we don't usually get to see other people from Massachusetts. They never have any kind of a formal. But we lucked out and we were invited to go to dinner with the state board. So that was good, too. Yeah, it was a last-minute thing. But it was good because we got to really get to know our board members from Massachusetts and have some really good intimate conversations with them that we might not have been able to have otherwise. So I'm going to just give you a few of my takeaways. Some of the keynote speakers were amazing. Sir Ken Robinson, he's spoken at several of them. And I've seen him before, and he was good and he was very entertaining. The last day, I think the one that most impacted me was Michelle Gay, who was a parent from Sandy Hook, was there. And it's really kind of emotional, but she literally talked about everything from the minute her girls woke up, what they ate for breakfast, to that horrible time when she realized that one of her daughters was no longer alive. And that particular daughter was nonverbal special needs student. And it was just amazing and just stories that she realized that the shooter pulled up right behind her to let, when she left, after she let her daughter out. Just things about what they might have, you know, they did the drills like everybody does. They had the plans in place. But you know what? When there's a shooter in the school and part of the drill is that a teacher has to go to her desk to get a key and then walk outside the room, lock the door, and shut it? That doesn't happen when you're under stress like that. So it was really interesting to hear and to come to the realization that even your best-laid-out plans aren't always good enough. And, you know, when people complain about how much our students are drilled and know it, it's, you know, it's a good thing. It's really, it's sad, but it's really important. So that was one of the most impactful things for me. I think there were like three major themes throughout the whole conference. SEL, social-emotional learning, threat management. We had, there were lots and lots of workshops offered on what to do if there's a shooting or how to get the word out if there's an emergency. And then there was a lot on nutrition as well, I think. I went to what they called a master class. And I think I talked about it when we talked about technology. It was with a young man named Shane Thelman. And he did a project called The Secret Life of Teens where he, it's almost like a 21-jump street kind of thing, where he infiltrated a school as a student and made friends with kids. And they opened up to him, they talked to him. One student told him that she was going to commit suicide. I mean, all these things. And he has a project called Count Me In. And they actually have a program for schools, which I thought was pretty cool. And there's a social media aspect to it that I think the kids would really connect with. I went to a workshop called Positive People, or How to Deal with Negative People, not for any other reason. I kind of looked at it as some of the public and some of the people that support us or don't support us in the community. And it's all about the deliverance. And when you ask a question, how you can frame it so that it's not a negative thing, but it's a positive thing, just in the wording that you use. I think it was probably a workshop that anybody could benefit from. And it was all about how to transform buildings into special places for learning and customer service. I went, actually, went to another one on customer service, which is something that you hear me talk about all the time, and how important it is, you know, for schools. The workshop I went on to customer service talked about a school district that did home visits. And I don't think that's quite what I had in mind when it comes to customer service. But, you know, you see all these videos of schools where the teachers meet the kids at the door. You know, even in South, you had the teacher that retired a few years ago that they asked to come back at graduation, who would high-five the kids when they walk in and say hi or have a good day. Just how important it is to start the day with good customer service for the kids and the teachers. I went to a workshop called Leading for Equity. And it was ensuring that LGBT students, there was equity and that all means all. And it also talked about staff that could be, you know, we talk about the students all the time. But it talked about considering staff and board members. You know, there are a lot of boards out there where, you know, there's diversity on the board in that direction and how it's not always a welcoming environment for them. And it was, you know, I actually, you know, I talked a lot in that workshop. I had a lot of people come up to me afterwards. And even though I felt frustrated this year with some of the stuff, I still feel that our school is way ahead above a lot of, our district's above many, many districts around the country. And I think that's one of the reasons why I get so frustrated, because I think that we're up here, but we can, you know, we can always still get a little bit better. The other thing I went to was a student, students, how ESSA, part of it is involving more stakeholders. And it talked about student, just like we talked about earlier. And again, a lot of, this is a new concept to a lot of school committees. I even noticed that in November when we were in Hyannis, Massachusetts, we went to a student panel and there was a woman sitting back to me going, I don't think we have a student on our committee, you know? And how much voice you can give them? You know, I found, I didn't talk to any other school committees that actually let their students vote. But a lot of them have more conversation than just what we do. And I know that we're trying really hard to involve them more. I know the night, the time is an issue, but, you know, I think it's something that we should strive a little bit more and more to do. And then school nutrition, talking about, you know, No Kid Hungry was part of the conference, talking about the breakfast program, how hungry kids can't learn if they're focused on being hungry. And just some different programs that the schools do to make sure that all the kids have lunches. And again, I think that we're ahead of the curve with our backpack program and our summer lunch program. And I think that's pretty much it in a nutshell for me. But it was interesting. I think the hardest part, too, is choosing. I think they offer us way too many choices. It's, you know, and then, yeah, and you're like, well, do I? We had to make decisions. And we worked really hard to have, Michelle drove that whole conversation every morning at breakfast. Okay, what are you going to, what are you going to? We're going to share it. The good thing is, in the age of the digital technology, is we all got an app. So we all have access to the materials from every single workshop, whether we went or not. So I think that that's good as well. So that's me.
Ms. Badger?
Yeah, I thought, I mean, I think what Ms. Hunt says is that we're ahead of the curve. I mean, that's our theme for, I think, tonight. We know that we're ahead of the curve, we're doing really great things. And more so when you go to something like this. When we were talking to people, like, we met a wonderful woman from Detroit.
Oh, gosh.
And, oh my god, the stories and like, what are they? They're like $400 million?
It's 40.
In depth.
Million, something like that. And they're just, that's what they have to work to pay back. And that's before they even get to their actual education of their students. And they told us something, they spend $1,000?
No, $7,000.
$7,000 per student. And I had all this written down last time, and I had all my paper with me. Did I bring it this time? No. But it was just really very interesting to see it from her perspective. We had some other people from Midwest. And just to really talk to people and see, we know we have it, we're in a good place. But when you are with other people, you know, you're even better. So for me, the first one I went to was social-emotional learning in the digital age. And that was what I was just saying. It all boiled down to making those connections with these students that they had had a problem in this one school. And they were just trying to connect with the students. They had a lot of students who acted out. And they found by making the point and being purposeful about making connections, which we all know, but being purposeful about it, I think, really had helped change their faculty, staff, and their students in the building and changed the culture. And teaching all them, why you're doing that, making the connections, teaching them how to be digital citizens, you know? We've got, what, how do you incorporate this into your life in a healthy manner? Which, you know, we all struggle with, I think, at times. And one really interesting fact that I didn't realize is that the average age for someone to get a social media account is 11 years old. Like, it seems like a lot. I mean, I cannot imagine if I had social media at 11. I kind of wished I didn't have it in college, but I had it at 11. You know, having it at 11 is kind of just mind-blowing to me. And it really kind of, being there made me want to... And it really kind of, being there made me want to bring back that series that we have been doing on technology and ways that parents, I mean, I know we had a small turnout at them, but I think that the parents who attended were thankful that they had the resources and the understanding. And I mean, there's so many ways to hide things on these phones, on your computers. And so I think that's something that as, you know, as a committee, we might want to think about bringing those back to educate our, our parents. And then the cyberbullying and social media were the next thing that I went to. And then, and it went back to a, a school resource officer actually created the curriculum. Kind of like we had at the, what was that? The?
MASC.
MASC regional meeting a year ago?
Yeah.
About a year ago. You know, sometimes I really, you read the descriptions on these things and you're like, oh, this is great. We don't have anything like this or, oh, let me see. And you get there and you're like, it's, I just wasted an hour of my life. I didn't waste an hour of my life.
Or if it's an ad for a program.
It just isn't exactly, we have it or it's, it doesn't work for Massachusetts. And so this one was interesting that the one thing that I thought was really, I keep meaning to ask and it was a firewall that we, you know, we have the firewall that keeps out Facebook, but this school resource officer was saying how it's important to make sure that there's at least one computer or two computers in the school which get beyond that firewall. So that faculty and, and staff can be able, can create kind of fake accounts and to know what's happening within their students and their lives. And it has, he said, has helped a lot for him to create rogue accounts, which you don't need to say anything publicly, but I'm just bringing it out there. The next thing that I went to is Secondary Victims of the Opioid Crisis. It was about Conway, New Hampshire. And they had to change their climate and culture and it was very interesting. They did a lot with guitar and yoga, a lot of guitar, a lot of yoga, a lot of mindfulness, which we've been talking about. But it was, it was very interesting and they have a bigger population than we do in Conway, New Hampshire that is dealing with the opioid crisis as well as a, they said some, it was some kind of like maybe thirty percent of the students in their school are being raised by grandparents. It was a very high number. That was just kind of shocking. No, I know we have them at that, at that level, just was. It was, it was a lot. And I, I think my theme was mental health at this conference. The impact of mental health awareness in the classroom. And, you know, again, one of those things that we went to and I was like, oh, we've, we've got this. Teaching children resilience and learning, teaching children to express their feelings, what we're trying to move to so that they understand how to express them appropriately. And learning about self-care. And so it's all the ways that we're, direction we're moving in. And then one really cool, I went to this, I didn't realize it was going to be a demo for a product, but it was preparing students for global society. And it was paired with Empatico and I know I talked about this to Dr. Maestis. And Empatico is this free software and they only do elementary schools, right, at the elementary level right now. But we had the opportunity that, basically it's a software in your classroom. You pull it up on your computer and another teacher pulls it up in their computer somewhere, anywhere in the world. And Empatico kind of, you put in, okay, I'm a history teacher or I'm science or whatever it is you're looking for. And what time you're available, what like age range you have and they match you with another teacher across the world. And we played a, a fun game with this guy and I think he ended up being in Morocco. And played it, trying to figure out where he was as a, as a group, you know, just like you would in a classroom. And it, it was really interesting and they told us, I asked them about existing relationships and if they were able to pair with existing. And they said, right now, they, they could definitely do that, but it's a little bit more complicated. But it, we'd have to do it on an individual basis. So. But it seemed like a really easy, it was no special anything required. So. Empatico was really interesting. And then the last one we all went, that I went to, we all went to together, the school safety. And I actually had the opportunity to speak to, we all did. We spoke to a student who was on the, a student representative on their school safety committee. So, and, and I reached out to one of their school committee members, another school committee member, to find out a little bit more about how they have students on their safety committee. I know where, where ours is in the morning. It's kind of difficult. And so I've been going back and forth trying to pin this school committee member down. So hopefully I'll get some more information on that. But I thought that would, was very interesting because I know we've had conversations with our high school students about school safety and I think that here, this board, and you've had them separately. And I, I think we learned a lot and they're really powerful and might be a good tool for us to see how we can incorporate those thoughts into our safety committee.
Again, we learned not everybody does them.
Yeah, and we did learn and some do specifically in every school and, and they do it district wide and then every school. So there's a lot of levels that, that, that we learned about. But overall, it was a really good conference. We met some really good people. And it was, we went to, what was that? The museum, the American Revolution? And we saw George Washington's tent, or I saw George Washington's tent. I was very excited. I was so excited. You guys had like dinner and I watched.
Reception at the, his National, what, American Revolution Museum? And then we had another reception at the art museum, which was, so we were the only ones in these museums and we got to tour them at Free Ring, which was kind of cool.
Ms. Haywood?
It was interesting to sit.
Long time ago, isn't it?
So, yeah, it was, it was a great convention. I, I actually started the day before on the Friday and I went to the new board member boot camp. And it was great to be amongst people who were like in my same shoes. And just to speak on like your role, they showed us videos which were interesting, like, you know, how, you know, not to overreach and, and what your role is and things like that. So that was, and that was actually a good, I would say like four or five hours. Like you were with these new members and you kind of switched up and, so that you weren't with the same group of people. So it was great. The classes I went to were Collaborating for Success, Increasing Family and Community Engagement for English Language Learners. And that was actually, it was a group out of Springfield who talked about just different, actually, she showed a video regarding a new family that had come over from Africa. And so, and just taught, and then showed what, where they essentially came from and what was truly new to them in, in this situation. And then talked about their programs. Actually, their programs are kind of extensive. But they do, I would say, they do serve like maybe, I would say, close to twenty, twenty-five different language groups. So, and it was, and the, I guess the conversation that came out of that, because we realized that some of the information actually wasn't accurate. Like just in terms of what the, what certain, what's it called, cultures do. Actionable Measures of School Climate and Student Engagement was another class. Ensuring, Ensuring Success and the Role of the School Board and SEL Programs was another class I went to. Measuring What Kids Need to Succeed, Schools in Crisis, Leadership for Equity and Closing the Gap for Underrepresented Students was another class I went to. And the school safety class. I thought, I guess for me, one of the great things I think was kind of the networking and meeting other people from other districts and realizing what it is that you have. And, yeah, what it is you, you have. Honestly, it was a great experience.
One thing we didn't mention is that we logged about eight thousand steps a day, which is over three miles. So it was the biggest convention center I've ever been in my life.
It was ridiculous.
It's three city blocks long.
Nobody ever knew where they were going.
Three city blocks long. And you had to cross the street each time to get into the next building.
And the numbers were not in order.
We had bleeding feet.
Yeah, it was ridiculous. It was like you'd go here.
So we could go this way and then go back and then go back and then up and down. It was pretty much the most walking I've ever done.
I am going to, without objection from the committee, this old business review, because we're running late tonight.
Yes.
I'd like to hold that over to another, to another meeting. Do I have any objection for that?
No.
No.
So we'll, we'll hold that over to another meeting and move on to new business. Any, any new business from committee members? So moving on then to the superintendent's report. Dr. Maestis?
Yes, this evening I have a few items to report. I note earlier, our students representing Northern and South mentioned Project Rising. And I'd like to highlight Yaksede Velazquez and Jared Sullivan. Yaksede was her idea and she was inspired by being in a leadership forum that Vennett invited her to. And to see a young lady have an idea and follow through with it, it was a very developmental moment for these youngsters, for them to have, have an idea and to plan it and put it together. And what Project Rising was, is it was an opportunity for students to network with community leaders. So basically what you had is you had tables spread out throughout culinary at Plymouth South. And every table there were community leaders sitting around the tables and three or four, five, six students would come to your table and they had a series of questions to ask you about your life and about what compelled you to do what you do. And those conversations were so rich and so engaging. And they just pushed on you. And, you know, they just enjoyed having a one-on-one or, you know, three-to-one conversation, six-to-one conversation with you. And I think it is something that our kids felt very positive about because they had the opportunity to dialogue with adults in a way that they probably haven't in the past. And I asked them if they've ever had the opportunity to do that. And they said, but both groups that I had said they had not in school, in a school setting. Which, you know, we've had those opportunities, but they've been in, on panels and forums, but they haven't been sitting down one-on-one, looking them in the eye and, and having these really high-level conversations. So it was very, very well done. And I will tell you, Ms. Haywood, thank you so much for guiding these youngsters and allowing them to follow through. And I know that you guided and you were the shepherd, guiding the, the youngsters to a new day. And I believe that they will, that this opportunity will continue because it was so positive. The adults that were sitting at the table were just blown away by the professionalism and the mature attitude of those individuals. So that was extremely positive and I was honored to be part of that.
How old were they?
Seniors.
Seniors, okay.
It was like, and it was, they could ask any question. I ask them, what's, what do you like about your school? I ask them questions too. You know, what do you like, what you don't like about your school, you know? And they, not, not, there was, there wasn't a whole lot they didn't like about their schools. There's a whole lot they did, which is very positive to hear that from kids. Also, I had two opportunities, actually one opportunity. I, I, and some of us here on the table went to see Margie receive the Crystal Apple Award at her church. And I think we all know that, well deserved. And also that that, that Crystal Apple Award will be the Margie Burgess Crystal Apple Award, which is very positive. Margie, we're very proud of you. Service above self, you know? That's, that's what we say, right, Marsh? Also, I'd like to highlight that Ms. Haywood received an honor from her employer, employee, this large organization, Brigham and Women's Hospital. Vennett was nominated for the Curlic Essence of Nursing Honoree Award, which she was given. And I will tell you, your impact has made a difference in your hospital, but your impact is being felt through this community, through children. So we see that here and we honor you for just you, you, you making that difference in the lives of the people that you are around every day and, and here in Plymouth. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I'll end with that. I think we have a lot of, yeah, congratulations to both of you. And I, I think you all know that from this week on, a hundred miles an hour. And if you get off, you gotta stop, drop and roll to get your next event. So enjoy the rest of the school year and we'll, we'll be seeing you along the way.
Thank you. Any questions for this, to, for Dr. Maestis? Okay. Okay, the update on the, on the superintendent's evaluation, that's our next item. So there was a lot of information in your pack. Now, Dr. Maestis?
Yeah, so tonight is, is probably the, it's the, the last part, public part of my, my, my goals. I, I did present my goals early in the year, gave you an update midway. And here I am tonight, kind of giving you the, the May update as to what's happened with, with our goal, with my goals for this year. I did provide some information on one of the goals. You can kind of see comments from grades seven through twelve. And I'll, I'll talk about those in a little bit. You will also be receiving in the next two days, three days, a listing of all the benchmark accomplishments for the district that we've had in the district this year that are aligned with the state evaluation tool. So you can kind of have some information regarding, regarding that. So the first goal that I had for this year was the school improvement planning process. And I think this goal really was born last year around this time when we were talking about school improvement planning and how school improvement plans, we talked about this with this, the CPR review and how we could actually change that model. So we were focusing more on student achievement and setting goals around student achievement. And I think one of the things that we have done in our district, we started doing it this year. And as time goes on, you'll see every school come before you, they will have benchmarks that are measurable around student achievement. You, you saw it this year and I think that model will be something that we are excited to see. And they're challenging for the schools. And that's something that we want our schools to challenge themselves. And I think with the information that you had here tonight with the coordinators, I think you can see that that articulation of what's happening in all those areas, how that comes across through student achievement. And our, our school improvement plans will have that information and have, have had that information this year. And we did revise that and it's something that is, is working. And I think I've heard from you during the process and progress that we've made this year that you have noticed that there's more emphasis on student achievement with measurable benchmarks that schools are putting in and targets that they're putting in. So that is something that was identified last year. We did put in the goal, I did put in my goals this year and it's something that has been a work in progress. But I think you can see that, you know, every school that has come forward this year and the schools that come forward to you from this point on will have those measurables around student achievement embedded and tangible data sources for you to actually see those results, which is something I think you are excited to, to see. So Dr. Sorenson, that was the first goal and I think you can, you can see that we did make that, that, that move to, to transition our school improvement planning process to actually take that achievement piece into consideration as we move forward. Moving forward with Goal Two. Goal Two was really stemming from the opening day presentation that was made and actually the theme that was associated with it. What I did is I had our technology department create a, a global address book for all our students from grades six through twelve. And I was able to send an email to them and I was, I will tell you that I created the email and I sent it out and about fifteen minutes later, I had ninety-eight responses. And that, that was pretty, pretty cool. I asked two questions. You can see on the database, there are, there are two questions listed. And the feedback that I got, if you've had a chance or if you haven't read the?
I've read it. It's amazing.
I was speechless just reading what, and how they internalized what this meant to them. From students that participated to students that just felt that they were somewhat able and, and given somewhat level of permission to actually be who they really feel that they are inside, which?
Without fear.
Without, without fear. So there, so there are some, some very key words that students used that were consistent throughout these. And I will tell you, the, the teacher responses were very positive as well. I did, I did remove about six that just said no and no. So I just took those out, but there were.
There were some no's in there.
Yeah, I, I took, I tried to get most of them, but, you know, there, again, a handful of, and some, again, I probably had, you know, I, I printed the report probably about a week, week and a half ago. So there are more to come. And also, we also pass this out to students K through, actually, one through. And also, we also pass this out to students K through, actually, one through five, have this, have the opportunity to do a worksheet. So, and I haven't collected those yet, and I'm pretty excited to get those. So when I do get them, I'll share them with you.
That'll be interesting.
But to the point of, of having a, a message and sending a message to students, I never ever thought it would have the impact that it, that it has had. You know, I've done these themes for 10 years now.
I'm wondering how you're gonna-
Oh, I have it, Marsh. I, I have it, I have it. We've been working on it already, so, but, the, but I'll tell you, the, to see kids just internalize it, you know, is pretty, pretty important to, to me, and I, I would just pleased with how it all turned out, but-
Do you think, do you think that it'll have any effect in schools on bullying?
I think, well, based on the student comments-
Because they're different.
Yeah.
Remember, the bullies are different too.
Yeah.
They don't know that, but-
Yeah. And again, that's, I think what we're trying to build is a overall district culture of, of respect-
Yeah.
And respect for the individuals that walk the halls every day.
Yeah.
So I'm glad you said that because I was thinking that an overall district culture of respect happens more than just one year. Somehow this theme has to be repeated again-
That's right.
And again. Maybe not to this extent, but we have to keep delivering that same message.
That's right.
I mean, that's how Mothers Against Drunk Driving accomplished their goal.
That's right.
They did it year after year for two decades, and now it works.
Yeah. And I think those are the, the, the opportunities that every teacher has, just 'cause, I mean, it, it's pretty impactful when teachers take that theme and build off of it. They can build off this theme every single year.
Right. And I think we want to encourage that.
Absolutely. And, yeah, and I, I think it met the initial goal of inspiring people, but I think the inspiration on that one moment of that, those, you know, that, that 15-minute opening day presentation, I think had lasting, and it lasting impression. And it, to me, it, I think we, we, we met that goal for, for the year. And again, to your point, Dr. Sorenson, we have to keep doing this. Goal Three, I, I think Goal Three is, is, is very important to, to the committee. It's very important to us in the district. It's very important to elementary teachers across the district. And I think as you see, the goal of having this implemented for the 2019-20 school year is, is, is a real reality, and we have a great deal of work to accomplish between now and September. We have worked, you know, through staffing to actually staff and allocate staff to be able to address this as a, a goal for us for next year, which is one of the harder things for us to do. The curriculum piece is a natural for us because there is so many, I think the hardest part for us is the articulation of exactly where the curriculum pieces go by grade level and that scope and sequence that comes along with it. And Dr. Campbell has already been working, those of you that were in, in central office last week walking around, you see, we've already purchased materials for some of the components of it that we got through a grant. But I think this is a significant collaborative effort across the district. Principals, Dr. Campbell, health educators that are PE teachers, and, at heart, they, they love health, and they are so excited to be part of a unified model from our early elementary up to fifth grade, and it's exciting for us to see how this program can actually push us in the higher grades, because I think kids will have the opportunity to have a baseline understanding in what we can do at the grades above. So I think our work will be formalized with this during the summer, and we're excited to present the developed work of our committee and our summer development committee to the school committee so that they can have the first opportunity to review it, this information before it gets on the street in, in front of kids. So I think that'll be exciting for us, and that will be something that we all look forward to. But I think this year has been probably the most productive year that we've had with health education since probably Mary Connolly, who came to visit with us, actually worked with us 20 years ago. So, but I think it, it really stems from the motivation the school committee had to actually push the agenda and get this on their radar and, and make things work in, in a fashion that the students and teachers deserve in this district. So with that said, Dr. Sorenson, that's where we are with, with that goal. And the last goal is relative to Plymouth Harbor Academy. And if you were to look at Plymouth Harbor Academy a year ago, I don't think anyone in this, in this room would realize that Plymouth Harbor Academy would be where it's at today. As I stated in my write-up, we have 27 students graduating on June 1st, which is a significant, significant feat. And it's not only, the 27th, the 27 graduating isn't as significant accomplishment. What's the most significant is the rigor the program had for them to graduate with strict guidance and strict academic curriculum that we believe corresponds with the regular High School Day programming, but it's set in an environment that is conducive to their needs. So when you take a look at, you know, they are in our building, and I can tell you, we don't even, there, I can go, I can be there all day long and I have no, you have no idea kids are even there.
We didn't hear them when we were upstairs.
You know? And it's just wonderful that I can go down and walk through that program any time of the day, and it's like, it's like I'm walking through and they think I belong there. So it's really become a partnership between the students at Plymouth Harbor Academy, Nathaniel Morton Elementary School, and central office staff. It's a, it's a partnership of those three entities and the community in general. I think they've, they've just, just assimilated nicely into, into the community of downtown Plymouth. And they've actually helped us out to get that building up and running, so we're very proud of them, and I'm, I'm very proud of the leadership of that school and also of the diligence to not give up, not to give up what they really believe those kids needed to become successful. The number 27 significant, it signifies that the model works. The model works. And, you know-
Now they have 27 vacancies.
And that, and that's a problem, now they got to do that with 27 other kids for next year.
There's a detail in what you just said that I think represents it as well. Of those 27, I don't remember the number, but he told us many of them are going to walk at graduation.
Yes.
That is key, because what that is, is I feel connected.
That's right.
That's great.
And, and they should be connected and proud.
Right.
Yes, they should.
Proud of themselves that they didn't quit.
No, they didn't quit.
Very happy.
Actually, they quit and they come back.
That's right. This resilience, and that's another, you know, like, talk about resilience, this is another, you know, stick-to-it type of opportunity for them, you know? So-
And to hear them talk about college plans was amazing.
That's right. That's right. So, Dr. Sorenson, these are the four goals I had for the year update provided to them.
Okay, so back to the committee, we have Dr. Miestis' goals and his final report on the goals. You have in your package today for the meeting was the actual evaluation instrument and other, and other data and printed material that is helpful if you read it. So what I'd like is, I have to put together the aggregate of all of your recommendations. So I'd like to have your recommendations on your evaluation of superintendent by our next meeting. So if you can get them to me by the next meeting, then I can put together the aggregate by the meeting after that. That's the meeting, two weeks from, two weeks from tonight.
It's a, it's the, it's the Monday after graduation.
Right. Well, if you want more time, give it to me, tell me you need more time.
The next weekend's graduation.
More meeting at a time, Ms. Badger?
Do you mean, like, you want, you want to be able to evaluate him at the next meeting? Or do you want us to just hand you-
No, I want you to get it to me.
Oh, okay.
So I can write the aggregate.
So then if we hand it in to you by June 3rd, then you're good?
That's what I'm saying.
That's right.
All right, just wanted to make sure I was understanding.
Two weeks, two weeks to write it up.
Yeah.
Your comments, get it to him.
I understand it, yes.
Need your individual ones in two weeks. Do you need more than, do you need more than two weeks?
Yes.
You need three weeks?
Well, the next meeting is June 17th, so that's almost a month.
It gives you less time to get it together.
Can we send them into our office mail or some other way? Do we have to wait until immediately?
You can drop them off with me and I can-
You have to get it to me.
I can scan them, I can do whatever I can to help you technologically.
How did you get it to me last year?
Email.
I brought it to a meeting, but I wasn't, two days after graduation when I'm out every single day and not.
Well, that's true, it is going to be a busy week.
That's what the problem is, is you're too busy.
Okay, all right, listen, I'm, I'm willing to work with you guys before you, so how about, what, three weeks?
Yes.
Three weeks from tonight, I'd like to have your written, written evaluation. All right, now you can get them through email, you can give a hard copy to Peggy, and she can get it to me, all right? But I need everybody's.
Save it to Google.
Last year I didn't get everybody's.
Google Drive, right?
I had to do it one less last year. So I'd like to have everybody's. The other thing I want to point out to the committee, I write an aggregate from your individual evaluations. Your individual evaluations are the public record, so if somebody were to ask for them, I have to provide them. So realize whatever you write down, it's public record if you give it to me as part of the whole evaluation process. Okay, just want to make you know that, because if you want to say something not so nice, I want you to know that, you know?
I just know that.
Not that you would do that, but, okay. Is it clear on what we want, three weeks? I would like to have them.
Three weeks, thank you.
Which means that I might, now that gets me a week short, I may not be able to have it by that.
Let's keep in touch.
So it'll happen during the summer.
Well, we'll, we'll have the opportunity to discuss it on that Wednesday before, so we can see where you are.
All right, okay. All right, yeah, when we-
Can you send us out a reminder too?
And I could have a couple of days to help him-
Yes.
Thank you.
With the-
Yeah, if you need to drop any-
Clerical part of it, if you need help, I can-
Okay, all right, I appreciate that.
That might help.
Could you make a note that next Monday or Tuesday, send the committee a reminder that they should be working on their evaluations of the superintendent?
I would appreciate that.
Yeah, sure.
It's funny, but it's really not.
Maybe a couple of times.
Half on the shoulder.
Some of us are, yeah.
It's a lot of work.
I have my phone buzzing.
So just to clear-
Go ahead.
The meetings we have are the 3rd and the 17th of June, correct?
Correct, yes.
There was no Wednesday meeting, I thought I said something about a Wednesday.
We need on Wednesday.
I got you, okay. Am I missing something? Okay, good. All right, I just wanted to be clear, because I'm looking at Wednesday, like, where is this?
Haven't seen you all, all those Wednesdays.
No, I'll be there.
And committee members, I don't know who responded to you yet on our Saturday morning meeting, have you gotten enough responses?
Yeah, well, actually, I wrote to you this afternoon.
Oh, well, that was this afternoon.
We're, it's, that's okay, we have, several members have gotten back to me, I haven't heard from absolutely everyone. It's looking like the only date that would really work for the majority is the 10th of August, but unfortunately, most of the administrators are not available that day.
Then it wouldn't work.
So I was gonna propose, or Mr. Campbell, Dr. Campbell asked if maybe we could do it September 8th, which is a Saturday.
Seven.
Seventh, sorry. And to see if all of you-
Well, everybody, you all can, can answer that tonight, but would you look at your home schedules and, and like-
I can, I'll consider, I can summarize this and send a new email tomorrow, but I did write to you today and sort of explain what's going on.
All right, okay, all right.
Because of right now, I don't have anything, so.
So send that out, please, and we'll see, see if anybody's available.
It's just a morning meeting, right? So it doesn't-
It's a morning meeting, yes.
Saturday morning meeting.
September 7th.
September 7th.
Okay.
Sorry, I-
Yeah, the 8th is a Sunday.
Okay, let's move on.
Okay.
Otherwise you'll be here all night. Okay, health curriculum update.
Just to add a few things to what Dr. Miestis already said, the health posting is up, and we're excited about the applications coming in for the additional health staff and as well as the curriculum development continues, and we've been working on that, that scope and sequence that Dr. Miestis said. Another thing that I wanted to point out that we're doing in addition to the SEL curriculum is, there's other modules obviously that we'll be teaching, but one of them is around substance use awareness. So through another grant and also through the collaborative efforts of PYDC, we will be purchasing a marijuana education initiative, that's the name of the company that, that does this curriculum. It's not all about marijuana, it's about substance use, very well put together. It has a curriculum around impact awareness, athletic awareness, and it also has an intervention in fraction response curriculum that can be used at the building level when students have suffered consequences due to substance use. So we're really happy to be rolling that out, purchasing that through some grant funds and providing some teacher training as we kick off our full-day PD next year. In addition to that, it will come with some parent education forums that we'll be doing at the beginning of the school year too, probably in early November. So there'll be more information in the fall on that as well.
Questions, comments about the health curriculum? We will, when we have our Saturday morning meeting, one of the agenda items was to look in-depth at the health curriculum, but if we do it in September, it would already be rolled out to the schools already by then, but that's okay.
And we could do it at a school committee meeting though, too, in August if we want.
The first, the first meeting in August?
Yeah, we can-
The, the regular August meeting?
Yeah, perhaps.
Do a formal presentation and follow up with more questions, maybe?
That's mid-August. Dr. Campbell, in the, in the Manomet presentation tonight, under their, under their implementation benchmarks, they wrote, they were referring to social-emotional education, and they wrote embodied regularly in the school health program K through 5. So they already incorporating the school health program into their school improvement plan, I assume, correct?
Correct.
Because we don't have a K through 5 program at Manomet right now, correct?
No, correct.
So they're, they're, they're already including it.
Correct.
Okay, all right, that's what I thought. Any else on health? Okay, committee members, reports and proposals. Ms. Hunt?
Um, I'm waiting for my notes to come up. I'm not on, I put notes in here, sorry. The first thing that I, I, I know that last time we were here, they had the North Tech showcase, senior showcase, and I attended the South one as well, which was overwhelming with all of the people and all the, the amazing students that were showing what they had learned out for the four years. I also attended the pinning ceremony for the Allied Health, and it's very emotional from, it's just such a unique ceremony, and I think the minute that it starts, you know, a popular song that the students vote on comes on, and you turn around and you see the students walking down, and they're handed a flower as they come onto the stage, it's just, I think it's just a really intimate and just special ceremony for them that is like none other that they'll have. So if you've never had a chance to attend one, it's, it's pretty emotional, it's pretty cool to see. And the students can actually ask somebody to, to pin them if they're in the medical profession or another student, a family member, and it's pretty, it's pretty cool to watch. And then other than that, I wanted to just comment, which we just did on the Harbor Academy tour, and how inspiring it was to see these students and get a chance to talk to them and hear about their future and their plans, and I know it's just even difficult for some of them to open up and talk to us the way they did, so that, that in itself is a, a special thing, and, and even getting a chance to tour the administrative offices upstairs and see how that building has come from when we looked at it a couple of years ago to, to look at how, whether or not we wanted to move in there and the condition of it to what it is now, I, I think it says a lot to our facilities department, our students, and our staff, so it, it looks amazing.
Can I add something to that?
Sure.
June 12th, we're gonna have an open house, and we're gonna invite all the students and teachers who had the opportunity to help get that building in shape. So put it on your calendar, it'll be 6:30 in the evening, and we're gonna have some appetizers, and I will have an opportunity to hand out some tokens of appreciation to the students and say a few words about some of the key features and the key work that the students have done. So we will send an invite out to you, we're gonna invite the students and their parents. We won't have the, I don't know if we'll have the school committee table horseshoe done, the vocational students are redoing it. So they're refinishing it, so, but I just want to put it on your agenda, I didn't mention it in my report, but June 12th, another function.
This is a good one.
But we'll get a reminder, email?
Yes, you will get a reminder, yeah.
What, what time did you say?
6:30.
Will students be there?
Yes, yes.
That go there?
We're gonna invite them-
The students that, that helped out.
Do it, but also the students that go there, attend?
If they helped.
Some of them are one of the, some of them are one in the same.
Some of them, some of them helped, some of them didn't help. So we'll invite them, their families.
Yeah.
And we'll mention, even if they, if they can't make it, we'll still mention the students.
Yeah.
Great.
Reports and proposals, committee members, Ms. Badger?
I attended the PFLAG presentation that No Place For Hate put on last week, and it was really well done, really engaging. I thought if this is, if this is the presentation that was given to our students, it was very informative and I think it, regardless of where you're coming from and understand, your understanding of the LGBT community, it, there was something in it for you to kind of think about differently or see something differently. She did an amazing job presenting it. So I do hope that they can come back and give her another presentation or maybe more people will be able to attend. It was well-attended, I mean, for a night event in, at the library and, or within our community, we, you know, it's hard, there's so many things pulling on people's schedules. So it was well-attended. I did want to say that Harbor Academy tour again was fantastic. And when we were in Dr. Maestus' office, he, I just happened to see a book, the book Educated. If you, and Dr. Maestus has a copy, that he got two copies, one is his and one was signed for the school committee at the, some conference, school committee conference.
Yeah, she, she actually presented at the New England Association of Schools and Conference, Schools and Colleges Conference, and I, I had a presentation there and she was right next door, so afterwards, I bought two books and I said, hey, would you mind signing one for the school committee?
Yeah.
So there's one for you to pass around and read it. Awesome.
If you haven't read it, I've read it, I had read it like maybe a year and a half ago, and it is a really good book, just kind of shows you the importance of education and how it can come from different ways for different people and it's really good. And then a little, some plugs that I need to do, the Plymouth Public Schools Alumni Association is selling VIP tickets to both of our raffle tickets for both graduation ceremonies, both North and South. There are seats of your choice, whether your prime seat is in the stands or your prime seat is on the, on the field, twenty dollars apiece, and they are on sale through Friday and hopefully on Saturday, if I can get the information, they'll be polled and everybody will know who the winners are. But all the proceeds go to help us with our scholarships, so the more tickets we sell, the more money we can give to students next year for the scholarship. And then my other plug is the Pam Mas Kids Ride is on June thirtieth. It's a really fun event. This is Katie's last year being the prime organizer, so I hope that we have a really great turnout. So if your kids like to ride a bike or you have ever been touched by cancer, which I think we all have, it's a wonderful event to either have your kid ride in or volunteer for, so.
It's June thirtieth.
June thirtieth. It's a lot of fun, I promise. Hot dogs, hamburgers, a bike ride, what's more fun?
All right, thank you, anything else? Ms. Burgess.
Well, I think it's all mentioned. I went to the North Showcase, I didn't go to South because last year you could have them move.
Same way, but it was good.
It was good food, but you had to fight for it.
I didn't get any food.
It was really crowded. So I went to North Showcase and I went to Empty Bowls and, of course, we did the Harbor Academy.
Five grand social community.
And the tour. PFLAG I went to and when the Sullivan's presented at the Spire for, you know, about what happened with their daughter. And so I don't know what else. I can't remember at all. I just keep running. And so that, that's it.
I was impressed at the turnout at the Plymouth South. I saw, Ms. Friday, there, turnout of people that went to the Plymouth South Senior Awards, not Senior Awards, I mean, Project Awards Night.
Yeah.
It was crowded, it was, it was mobbed, it was great, but all those people came to support them.
There was a lot of alumni there that came back to talk to their teachers. The whole McGilphy family was there.
Yeah, I know.
That's a big group.
I mean, there were quite a few people at North, but not as, not as many.
Well, there weren't as many people displaying, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, any correspondents tonight?
No, Vena has.
Oh, Ms. Heywood, I didn't see you hand, I'm sorry.
It's okay, it's okay, I'll be quick. So I went to the Massachusetts School Nurses, this organization hosted an event, Carolyn Raines, our Director of School Nursing, and it was on addressing the regulation of marijuana. The Cannabis Control Commissioner, Jen Flanagan, was there and she was the keynote speaker. Dr. Maestus spoke, there were a panel, there was a group of panelists and Dr. Nate, Dr. Nate was there, Chief Oteary, Matt Moratori and some others, just talking about just cannabis and, and just the regulations regarding it in, in terms of the towns. And it was an interesting night, interesting conversation. I went to the pinning, which was wonderful, it kind of brought me back.
It was emotional.
I remember my pinning years and years ago with hats. And so it was, it's great to see. And I was able to go to the senior project at North with Ms. Marley Hunt and.
You missed it.
No, you saw some of it. You know what? This week for me, between Marley and Jack Sari, was just.
Fact.
Huh?
I think she's emotional.
It was, yeah.
Emotional.
Yeah, it was emotional. It was emotional, it was empowering, you know, just to see, because I can't say I was mentoring, I was probably just, they're, you know, those two women will do amazing things. And, and so it was just amazing to see just, you know, their presentations and/or, or things that they created, I, I don't know. It was, it was inspiring, I would say, inspiring. It was a great, great week.
Very much, yeah. I did pass over correspondents, is there any?
No correspondence.
Okay. PYDC report?
Well, I kind of, I kind of gave it because I went, there isn't really much else. Well, no, I went to package stores and.
Okay.
And stickers. In other words, I went in to see if they would take a sticker on that thing when the kids came next Tuesday to put them on. And the poor guy, and one of them was really upset because he's the only one in the store and he can't leave the register.
Oh, for the kids.
And, and so he was having a hard time, like, how are we going to be able to do it? But I said, they'll do it. You know, they'll come in, you can stay at the register, that, they're only going to put a sticker on it. So, yeah, so it was, and then one of them was Perris, and Perris is the one that they featured.
Yeah.
So that was good, but Perris was really good, yeah.
That's great.
But it's the other one, he doesn't own the store, he's just a worker, you know?
All right, is there a building committee report?
Yes. It's not too long, if I can find it. It was on May ninth and we were talking about the Russell Street parking deck still. We were trying to decide, because it's at a standstill, the top deck, for some reason, the subcontractor didn't know, I don't know, but they, what we needed on the top deck to seal it and all properly was a lower grade than what we had put in the spec, but it's subcontract, it's different. But anyway, I think we've worked it out and so I think that it's going to go forward, otherwise it could be held up forever.
Ever, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And the maritime facility, there's going to be, oh, I didn't write that down, it was on the twenty-third, Thursday, four o'clock, they're going to have the official opening thing. Yeah, yeah, four o'clock. But I'm the person from the building committee that will be attending the working meetings every, every other week down on the wharf, so I'm kind of, we're going to be really involved with the maritime facility. The Plymouth Fire Station, the Eversource is going to install poles, hopefully, in the next two weeks. Five twenty-seven twenty is the date for completion and the fencing's going to be installed next week, which is this week. And, and they've introduced everything to, to the neighbors. So we'll see, eighteen, oh, the library roof, that, that's just ongoing right now. And the eighteen forty-nine courthouse, they have to reinforce the trusses and they can use no thermal paint, they, they want copper. The bid will be done by October nineteenth. Airport administration building is on the home stretch on schedule and it's going to open in October. Next meeting, June thirteenth.
Thank you very much. Accounts.
No, I'm not there yet. Okay, here we go. To receive cost, no.
Whereas.
Sorry. Whereas school committee members have been provided with a copy of the Cost Center Transfer and Transaction Summary Report and the warrant for review, I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the report and accounts payable warrant number S zero five two-three-one-nine dated May twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen in the amount of one million nine hundred and thirteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-two cents as presented.
Is there a second to that motion? Ms. Burgess is the second. Is there a question on that motion? Okay, can we please vote on it?
It's the first thing we've had to vote on. Yep.
Okay. Everybody voted in favor. Thank you, that's the only warrant tonight.